Welcome, everyone, to the March 7th Regular Board Meeting. The emigration today will be Commissioner Joe Daughtry.
Spire heads. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, your wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to grow closer as a group and nurture the bonds of community. Fill us with your grace, Lord God, as we make decisions that affect the citizens of Wayne County. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the big Commissioner Freeman-Hartson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have everyone had an opportunity to review February 21st 23 minutes? Madam Chair, prior to that, my apologies, we'll need to approve the agenda first. It's not on there, but I have it here, so you will be able to vote.
So moved.
I have a motion to approve the agenda. Okay, hold time. All right, you should be able to vote now.
Give me one second. There you go. Yes, indeed.
All right. Thank you. Now you can move to the minutes, Madam Chair. All right. Do I have a motion after everyone is...
So moved.
Okay. Motion on the floor to approve February 21st 23 minutes. All right. I put you as yes, Mr. Acoff.
Moving on to special presentations. Bring up Mr. James Wade with the Maxwell Center. It's hard to believe that the Maxwell Center is five years old. Let's hear to give you an update on that.
Good morning, everyone else. Thank you for your time this morning to come and talk to you for a few minutes. I just wanted to make sure that everyone knew that the Maxwell Center was five years old. On one hand, it does not seem like it has been five years. On the other hand, we could be a little older. But we are very excited about it being our five years. Back in 2008, rather, there were some studies done, and a lot of people from the county and the city were wanting to get together and do some type of building for there to be events and things, having a home to be in. And after lots of hard work, in 2016, there was a groundbreaking. And two years later, or four two years, there were construction. These are the original renderings of the building. And the renderings went to reality through those two years of construction. And in March 2018, there was a four-day celebration to open the Maxwell Regional Convention Center. We started out, the first day of our four-day gala, with ribbon cutting and lots of important people giving speeches and talking about how hard it was to get to the point of opening the building. But we are extremely happy that we did. After the ribbon cutting, the first day, we had an ag day. The entire building inside and out was full of ag, tractors, bees. We had a little bit of everything in the building. That night, we reset the building, and the next day, we had our gala. The opening night gala had 750 people in attendance. It was a very nice dinner. We had a band. We partied a little bit. A lot of people were just happy to be there and happy that the building was open. That night, we changed everything over. And on day three, on Saturday, we had a family day. As you can see, we had exhibits. We had the largest fire truck in the county. We had people from the city with the police in different areas of the city. We had 4H there. We had hatching chickens there. And families came out the entire day and just spent the day and did fun things with their kids. That night, we reset everything again. The next afternoon, we had four hours of entertainment from Wayne County schools. Every elementary school, public schools, every elementary school, junior high and high school, put on some type of performance. Some were musical, some were singing. But it filled four hours, and a lot of people got to see their kids perform in our building. That evening, we had the Max Out the Max Youth Rally. We had 750 teenagers and young adults in the building. And that ended our grand opening. That week, my staff and I each got about six hours' sleep the entire week because we were there every night changing over for what was going to happen the next day. Since March 2018, we're on day 1825-plus now. Since opening day, we've hosted over 1,250 events in the building, and we've had over 250,000 visitors through the building. The economic impact to Wayne County has been over $5 million per year, except for the COVID period. Since March 2018, we've had all kinds of other events, from corporate trainings. And some of our corporate trainings, for example, are folks who have literally come back to our building every year. We've got S.T. Wooton, we've got T.A. Loving, we've got Case Farms. So we have a lot of folks who have come, and once they came and experienced our building and the service that we provide, they've come back every year. We've had all kinds of celebrations, from birthday parties to retirement parties to Christmas parties. As a matter of fact, there's not a whole lot of events that we haven't done. We average over 200 event days a year. We've had multi-day conventions, worship services, school and family reunions, funeral viewing, celebrations of life, entertainment activities, fundraisers, weddings, receptions, banquets, graduations, all different kinds of parties, concerts, exhibitor shows, conferences, luncheons, birthdays, award ceremonies, corporate board meetings. We've done a lot of military ceremonies, banquets, and celebrations, and we've done all types of holiday and Christmas parties. We stay busy, and that's a good thing. I think it has proven that the building was needed in Wayne County. We are the largest building in the county. The next-largest building can hold about 396 people for a banquet. We can hold 900 people for a banquet. So it has obviously been proven with all the events that we do that we were needed in the county, and it seems to be a great thing for most people. We are award-winning. We won the Convention South Readers' Choice Award, which is voted on by people in the industry for five years, every year that we've been open. We've won the News Argus Readers' Choice Award all four years that they've done it for venues, and we've won the Best of the Boot, which is rather new. In 2022, sorry about that, there was a groundbreaking, again, and this time it is for the Homewood Suites. They are built and operated by BPR Properties. They will be coming in 2023. The latest date they've given me is simply the second quarter of 2023. They had a couple of slight delays. I'm not privy to the details of that, but we are looking forward to the hotel being there. We do think it will help our business in a lot of ways. We've had a lot of events that have talked to us about coming, but they want that hotel, and so we're looking very forward to that.
Was that 2024?
Yes, it is.
Okay. You're behind, Joe.
It is, 2024. Sorry about that. We'd like to, again, just make sure everyone is aware. We've done some social media and advertising about the fact that it is our fifth birthday. We think it's a great thing, and we're as busy now, if not busier, than prior to COVID. Since the beginning of the year, we've already done about 60 events. And if you think about what time of year it is, and we normally do 200 or a little over 200, we are way up this year so far on events, and we hope that it stays that way. We'd like to thank everyone who helped make it a success, and that includes all the Commissioners currently, all the previous Commissioners, the City of Goldsboro. They were instrumental also in the land and getting the building built. All of our sponsors that we have that gave money and donated services to help the building come along, Wayne County employees. We've had a lot of different employees from a lot of different departments that help us with one thing for another, and we appreciate all of their help. And of course, we appreciate our clients who keep coming back for one event after the other. And I think that also is a good sign for us that our customer service is on the level that it should be because we have people who keep coming back. Thank you very much for letting me remind everyone of this today. If you have any questions.
No, but thank you, Slare.
Thank you all. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Did you bring the case?
Everybody keeps asking that.
Thank you, James.
Thank you all.
What a tremendous asset to have here in the county. It's used widely, and I encourage everybody, if you haven't been and visited it, please get out and do so. Moving on to item number three, we have a motion to approve the 2023 Social Work Month proclamation, and Vita Hamm is here to read that.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I am Vita Hamm from Wayne County Department of Social Services Program Manager, and I have brought with me some of our employees. If you would stand while I read the proclamation. Social Work Month 2023 Proclamation: Social Work Breaks Barriers. Whereas social workers enter their profession because they have a strong desire to help empower individuals, families, communities, and our nation overcome issues that prevent them from reaching their full potential, and whereas social workers have worked for more than a century to improve the human well-being and enhance the basic needs of all people, and whereas social workers follow a code of ethics that call on them to fight social injustice and respect the dignity and worth of all people, and whereas social workers positively touch the lives of millions of Americans each day in a variety of places, including schools, hospitals, the military, child welfare agencies, community centers, and in federal, state, and local government, and whereas the 2023 Social Work Month theme, Social Work Breaks Barriers, embodies how social workers help empower individuals, families, communities, and our society to overcome hurdles that prevent them from achieving better well-being, and whereas social workers are the largest group of mental health care providers in the United States, working daily to help thousands of Americans overcome mental illnesses such as depression and anxiety, and whereas social workers are on the front lines of the nation's opioid addiction crisis, helping people get the treatment they need and prevail over substance use disorders, and whereas social workers have helped people cope with death and grief and help people and communities recover from natural disasters that are increasingly fueled by our warming climate, including hurricanes, drought, flooding, and whereas social workers have helped this nation live up to its values by advocating for equal rights for all, including people of color, people who are indigenous, people who are LGBTQIA2S+ and/or people who follow various faiths, and whereas the social work profession is one of the fastest-growing careers in the United States, with about 708,000 social workers today and more than 60,000 more social workers expected to enter the profession over the next decade. Whereas social workers have continued to push for changes that have made our society a better place to live, including a livable wage, improved workplace safety, and social safety net programs that help ameliorate poverty, hunger, and homelessness, and whereas social workers endeavor to work throughout our society, to meet people where they are, and help empower people and our society to reach the goals they wish to attain. Now, therefore, in recognition of the numerous contributions made by social workers, the Wayne County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim the month of March 2023 as National Social Work Month and calls upon all citizens to join the National Association of Social Workers and Wayne County Department of Social Services in celebration and support of the social work profession.
All right. Madam Chair?
Yes.
In the form of a motion, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the motion of the Social Work Month proclamation.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Okay.
Madam Chair, let me come in.
Yes, please.
We appreciate everything you and your teammates and your workers are doing, but I think the public needs to know that you guys are facing problems, and the problem is burnout. I think COVID had a big thing to do with it, but the work you're doing is greatly, greatly appreciated.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I would like to say on behalf of the department, we really appreciate the support that our Commissioners give to the agency. I can't put into words how important it is, because I know some other counties kind of struggle, but when it comes to Wayne County, I think our leadership, including our county manager and assistant manager, you guys are great to us, and we thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's not quite 9:30, so if we would jump down to the Appointment Committee.
Okay.
Madam Chair, we have several appointments. So bear with me. All of these will come to you in the form of a motion. Motion to appoint Esther Grossman, Edwina Guzman, to Wayne County Latino Council. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Motion to reappoint Paula Edwards, Angie Bozwell. Yes, ma'am.
All right.
Motion to reappoint Paula Edwards, Angie Bozwell, Patricia Berryer, Tari Davis, Christian Alexander, and Cheryl Crumpler to the Commissioners Council for Older Adults. And last but not least, motion to reappoint Dr. Osborne Wilder to the Animal Control Advisory Committee. Madam Chair, that's the end of the Appointment Committee.
Thank you, Commissioner Hartson.
All right. We still have a little bit of time. If you would like to jump down, let's approve the consent agenda next.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
All right, we have a motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda.
Discussion?
Yes.
Yes, this is for our county manager. In regard to one of the consent items, the CDVG, can you elaborate on that a little bit, on the grant?
Well, Allison, if you would, Miss Spade, would you like to elaborate on one of that?
I know that's something dealing with the Rolandwood section, but I would like to know, now that, you know, what's the process now that we're going to be moving the funds?
Well, the budget amendment just anticipates the actual funding coming down of $750,000. So this is specifically for CDVG Neighborhood Revitalization, but we are actually contracting as part of the grant for RSM Harris to manage that, and so we can certainly get an update from him on what the next steps are, if you would like that.
Yeah, because, you know, that community, they've been calling me consistently. They're ready to see, you know, some resolve with the flooding, and, you know, they want to know, you know, if they're going to be safe, you know, coming next storm, so.
Okay. We can certainly reach out to him and ask him to provide some information for you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is everybody pleased to vote?
We spoke to us. I've already voted one time.
If you can put it on the consent, I'm not sure what.
It will let me vote twice.
I got you. How about that? It's unanimous. Okay. Mr. Trump, it's 9:30. Can we go back?
About a minute and a half, if you want to just pause for just a moment.
Okay. Do we have time to vote a new business?
I think so.
Andrew, if you'd like to step up, and we'll do a new business. Number 14 is a motion to approve a resolution by the County of Wayne authorizing the execution of opioid settlements and approving the supplemental agreement for additional funds between the state of North Carolina and local governments on proceeds relating to the settlement of opioid litigation.
Let me give me one second. Let me get down to the materials. Good morning again. This is, and we've, this has been in the news recently. If you recall, we got a first round of funding, a little over $6 million, as part of our participation in the opioid settlement. That was a settlement of the class action lawsuit that the Attorney General's Office and North Carolina Association of County Commissioners negotiated. We've been receiving that money. It's been coming in in installments. Recently, there's been a development in another batch of litigation, and let me pull up the resolution. And it relates to mostly pharmacies, so it's Walmart, Tava Pharmaceuticals, Allergen Finance, Allergen Limited, CVS, and Walgreens. And the Attorney General's Office and our attorneys have negotiated another round of settlement, so they're calling this the second wave of settlement that counties and local governments throughout North Carolina are going to receive. Similar to the first one, this is going to require you to pass the MOA. They're calling this a supplemental MOA, and it lays out the terms similar, it mirrors the terms of the first agreement. So you still have option one and option two that you can, the strategies that you can choose from in order to spend this money in the opioid, to combat opioid addiction throughout the community. And the last page right here, this is probably most important for you all. It gives a breakdown of what all the counties are receiving throughout the state. And if you zoom in, there's the Wayne County allotment right there. So our first wave of funding, like I said, was about $6.2 million, and then the supplemental or the second wave of funding is going to be $5 million. So that amounts to a total of about $11.2 million that Wayne County is receiving to combat opioid. And there is going to be another action item following up, and the manager will speak to that about the process we're going to go through to start deciding how we're going to spend this money. The one additional piece of information I'll give you, the first wave of funding, if you recall, is spread out over the course of 18 years, and we've shown you that before, how much you're getting each year. This is a little bit different. Some of these entities are paying in lump sums upfront. For example, I believe Walmart is paying their portion in one year. Others are paying over the course of five years. Others are paying in the course of 12 years. So it's not going to be that 18-month or 18-year payout that what we got for the first wave. The Attorney General's Office is working right now to get an updated distribution for Wayne County, so you can see exactly each year how much you're going to get and when you're going to get it. And we'll certainly share that as soon as we receive that. What we need from you all today is a resolution to pass to approve the supplemental agreement. This needs to be done. I believe the date was sometime in April or May, so that it can go back to these entities, to the pharmacies. They can review everything, and they can finalize approval. Then the court would approve it, and then that money will start being distributed. Any questions on that?
Questions?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Resolution 2023. What was the number?
I'm sorry?
What was that, the resolution number?
Do you have that, Carol?
I do not.
Okay. Madam Chair, I'm in, just to make a motion that we approve the resolution.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Please vote.
Okay. Madam Chair, moving on to item.
Is it showing that you voted?
It just did.
Okay, there we go.
Okay, moving on to number 15. It's a motion to approve an opioid settlement working group for the Wayne County opioid funding settlement. This is a recommendation from me to the board chair for her to create a working group to receive recommendations from county departments and outside agencies on how they could spend the money or use the money to combat opioid addiction. Any program or project that they would select, it would come back to the full board for a vote and a recommendation. I think this is necessary in order to set up some type of pre-hearing or preliminary hearing in order to receive those proposals. And I would make that, we would need a motion for you to do that if the board sees fit.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we select our chair of the board to approve a commedia working group for the opioid settlement for Wayne County.
Got a motion on the floor?
Discussion?
Yes.
How are we going to choose these individuals, and are some of these individuals going to be board members?
Yes, there will be some board members.
Okay.
And they will be from different, DSS, EMIs.
But when I mean board members, I'm talking about our board as well.
Yes, we can have three.
Okay. I'd love to be on that board.
I would also just like to say, I would like to make sure that the board is well diverse. You know, we need to make sure there are individuals that are in the community that are already working with this population on that board to make suggestions. I mean, you know, we can put a lot of people on the board that have no idea what's actually going on with the opioids in the community, you know? So we got to make sure that we reach out to those that are already hands-on with that community to make sure that they have their input on this board and not just a bunch of individuals that, you know, are already on boards and don't really know anything that's actually going on with that population.
Did it take the vote on?
Yes.
Very good. We can move forward on that and start getting to work. We'll go back now, Madam Chair, and you'll recess the Wayne County Board of Commissioners meeting and convene the Wayne County Board of Adjustments.
Do I have a motion to recess the Wayne County Board?
Just recess again.
Okay. We recess? All right. We have the Board of Adjustments.
Wait, have you opened?
Yeah.
Okay. We have a 9:30 a.m. public hearing for the Board of Adjustments to receive public comments for the special use permit for SASSR Solar Energy Facility.
I would also just like to say, I would like to make sure that the board is well diverse. You know, we need to make sure there are individuals that are in the community that are already working with this population on that board to make suggestions. I mean, you know, we can put a lot of people on the board that have no idea what's actually going on with the opioids in the community, you know? So we got to make sure that we reach out to those that are already hands-on with that community to make sure that they have their input on this board and not just a bunch of individuals that, you know, are already on boards and don't really know anything that's actually going on with that population.
Take the vote on?
Yes.
All right, I appreciate that. We can move forward on that and start getting to work. We'll go back now, Madam Chair, and you'll recess the Wayne County Board of Commissioners meeting and convene the Wayne County Board of Adjustments.
Do I have a motion to recess the Wayne County Board?
Just recess again.
Will we recess? All right. We have the Board of Adjustments.
Wait, have you opened?
Yeah.
Okay. We have a 9:30 a.m. public hearing for the Board of Adjustments to receive public comments for the special use permit for Sasser Solar Energy Facility. The board may choose to take action following the public hearing. Now, I asked our planning director Barry Gray if he would come up and give some information on that.
Before I speak, Madam Clerk, do I need to be sworn in?
Anybody that speaks really needs to be sworn in.
Call if anybody wants to speak. We're going to do everybody at one time.
We can.
Okay. Do you want me to make that announcement?
Yes.
If anybody would like to speak, if you signed up for the public hearing for the solar utility facilities, whether it's Stevens Mill or Sasser Solar, you can come forward and be sworn in at this time.
And I'll let everybody just...
You better get some more bibles.
I'll do this group, and then I'll do the next group. They can't get up here. Do you swear or affirm that the evidence you shall give to the board in this action shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
It is.
And then the next ones, please. Do you need to come up, sir? Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the evidence you shall give to the board in this action shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
All right, good morning.
Good morning.
All right, our first case today is a utility, solar utility facility. This is Sasser Solar, for those in the audience, is the one we will be starting with. This is a solar utility facility for 80 megawatts. It's on 1,200 acres in Indian Springs Township. This is in the vicinity of Greenfield Cemetery Road, Broadhurst Road, and Indian Springs Road. It is just west of Highway 111, south of the river, so in that area of the county down there. The owner is Six Maxwells LLC, G and L Ag Properties LLC, Maxwell Foods LLC, and Goldsboro Milling Company. And the developer is Birch Creek. This is in the air control surface area for Seymour Johnson Air Force Base, which means that any solar utility facility that comes before you will come as a special use, which is why we're here today. And of course, a hearing before the Board of Adjustment is required as part of that. We did receive comments from Seymour Johnson Air Force Base, and I will briefly mention those. Actually, I do want to read those so that they are on record, if you will be patient with me. The first is, "The project owner should partner with the United States Department of Agriculture representatives at Seymour Johnson Air Force Base to allow USDA access to the project to observe and collect real-time data and provide mitigation strategies to reduce bird attractants." The second is, "The project owner should implement long-term bird mitigation efforts on-site as part of the development plan." "The project owner should implement and share an accompanying scientific study to capture pre- and post-construction bird wildlife data for applicability to the larger U.S. Air Force, Department of Defense, and FAA discussion." And then finally, "Provide Seymour Johnson with a solar glare hazard analysis tool report based on the location and heights provided in the basis comments, inclusive of the intended panel type and coding." And so, that is one of the comments as well from Seymour. These are actually similar, same comments that were part of, if you remember, last year, you had another solar facility that was south of Seymour Johnson that had the same comments as part of that as well. And this is, because it is a special use, you can apply conditions of approval to that. And so, with Seymour Johnson Air Force Base's comments, we do ask that you include those if you decide to move forward with this, to include those as conditions of approval. And at this point, I would like to enter all the documents that are in your packet. I would like to enter those into the record at this point. Thank you. Oh, we made a chair. The applicant does have several representatives here to speak on behalf of the project as well.
Do we have?
Thank you.
Would you please announce your name, please?
Yes, thank you. Madam Clerk, have the notebooks been circulated? Thank you very much. Good morning, I'm Tom Terrell. I'm an attorney representing Birch Creek Development. My firm is Fox Rothschild. I'm based in Greensboro. I have, as Barry said, several folks here with me tonight. Let me just very quickly tell you who they are. I have asked each of them to give a 60-second to 90-second overview. This is information and evidence you have heard before, and most of which is in the notebooks. Mr. James Betren is here representing Birch Creek, the developer. Ms. Jennifer Lester is here on behalf of Kimley Horn. Her firm does probably most of the civil work for solar facilities in the southeast. Mr. Tommy Cleveland, formerly with NC State, was one of the pioneers of renewable energy in North Carolina. He's a national voice now, but he can explain everything about the science of this technology. Mr. Nick Kirkland is here. His company has done more market impact studies on solar facilities than any firm in the country. They are the world's leading collector of data on impact of the, or non-impact of these things. Mr. Michael Graham, who was sitting with me, we met Mr. Graham a couple of years ago at a neighborhood meeting for a project in Richmond County. And he came to the meeting because he was an adjoining owner, and he showed up explaining to us how wonderful it is to live next to a solar farm and what it's like to work on these facilities. He has an expertise in the installation, and so he is here, and he's been with us on other projects. And then finally, Mr. John Pike and Jim Lynch are here with Goldsboro Milling and Maxwell Foods. I could not have asked for a better introduction tonight than, this morning, than the presentation on the Maxwell Center and what it means to this community in so many ways that Maxwell Center was made possible, in part by contributions of Maxwell Foods. So they are here also. If you would just very quickly let me walk you through the tabs, I won't take long. I do want to pause on one of them. The first tab is a project overview. It's a quick glance of what this facility is, where it is as an 80-megawatt facility. Our application is at the next tab, and it has a high-level overview of how this project meets all of your standards for a special use permit. At the next tab, it's always, I think, important to show you that the company takes neighbors seriously and not just, it's not a perfunctory action. They act, this is an actual process for explanation and input. This is not just a letter that says, "Come to a meeting." It is a letter, a six-page letter, that gives a wide variety of information in a very readable, understandable format for anybody who has not had the opportunity to know some of this. At the next tab is the site plan. I want to call your attention to two things. The first is that your ordinance requires 25-foot buffer. But we, but we met with the neighbors, there were some folks along Indian Springs Road who were interested in a larger buffer. We told those neighbors that we are not going to promise or offer you anything that we cannot and will not put in writing. I will tell you right now that these extra buffers, I'm going to explain, we will quickly, and we ask you, in fact, to put them into an order for a special use permit. But along the bottom, along Indian Springs Road, you will see that we have doubled the buffer from 25 to 50 feet. It is already in the site plan. This site plan is in Mr. Gray's office in his possession. And then there is one little dog leg that is thicker than all the rest. That's a four times the width buffer. Mr. Larry Graddy is a neighbor. He came and asked us, he was concerned about losing his view. So Birch Creek was responsive, and they said, "We will give you four times what that, the buffer is by the county, and we're putting here," and I will say it again, "that will be put in writing to show our faith to Mr. Graddy." The next tab is a standard frequently asked questions on solar. It's just some stuff we actually put here into evidence. The tab after that is Mr. Cleveland's report. You've probably seen a variation of this in the past. Streams and wetlands is the next tab. We often hear about concerns of, environmental concerns about streams and wetlands. A solar company cannot violate the Clean Water Act. They cannot violate the state's provisions on sedimentation and erosion control. Some of that is controlled locally, some by the state. But the fact is, every setback, every buffer required by law has to be met. The next tab is a market impact study, it's close to 80 pages. Again, you've seen this before in different forums, and for over a decade, in fact, I think, I think Nick could tell you, the leading statistic that Kirkland has built upon was a subdivision here in Wayne County to show you how a subdivision that is pre-imposed enduring a solar farm, that was not impacted. The next tab is the letter from Seymour Johnson Air Force Base. If I haven't said it clearly enough in the materials, we'll say it again now, we will work with Seymour Johnson Air Force Base. These conditions are not an issue whatsoever, and we would expect that their conditions would be in the ESHP order. And then, of course, the final tab is the materials on decommissioning. And before I sit down, before I turn it over to some experts, I think there's something I probably should say publicly. I sent this to Mr. Gray before the meeting. I have projects in 30 to 40 cities or counties in three states at any given time, and the planning departments are often the worst thing you can work to go through. You can't get in, you cannot penetrate them, there are people who try to block projects, people don't understand how a planning department can stop economic development. But you don't have that problem in Wayne County. I think this is my, I'm sitting here trying to think, I think this is my fifth project. I wasn't here last summer because I had COVID when you approved Oxbos Solar. But in every case, when you need to read Barry Gray, you pick up the phone and he answers. If you need good information and a wise advice about something, he gives it to you, he's thorough. I don't ever get a chance to say this to a board, but I thought it would be a shame if I said it to him privately, but not publicly. So I'm going to ask our first speaker to come up. Jennifer, would you like to?
Good morning. My name is Jen Lester. I'm a licensed professional engineer with Kimley Horn. We generally cover things like site civil design, ratings, stormwater, erosion control, and then any kind of permitting that that site would go through before it reaches construction. So the NCDOT, NCDQ, and then any permits from the Army Corps if required. Just want to give kind of a high-level look at some of the features on this site. So in addition to the extra buffer width that Tom mentioned, I think your ordinance requires in residential areas that there is a vegetative buffer present. This site actually does propose a vegetative buffer along all property lines, regardless of that use that it is adjacent to, so that is a little above and beyond what is in your ordinance. But outside of that, it's following all of the setback requirements from right-of-ways, from property lines. And the site is generally considered low-density by DEQ, which just means there's no permanent stormwater post-construction that is required because of the low amount of impervious area that's being proposed on the site. So that is, that is the highlights, but happy to answer any questions.
One question, only a letter from Seymour Johnson, A number four, talking about bird wildlife, aircraft strike hazards. It's stating that bird activities are prevalent in solar farms. Do you think, I mean, it's no question whether it will be an impact or not here answered. Would it be a...
I've been dealing with this with Seymour Johnson, I think this is my third time. Actually, it's speculative. They don't know. What they're asking, if you read these points, is for Birch Creek to be willing to give them access to this facility, to participate with them in collecting data. The broad concern is that when you clear the land, there might be rodents and other mammals that would be prey for what they call in this letter, the soaring, the raptors who might come above. It's hypothetical at this point. There is no good data, so we're saying, "We will gladly work with you to help figure this out to see if it is." The other thing is a standard glare analysis. That's a fairly standard around any military base.
Hi, my name is Nick Kirkland with Kirkland Appraisals. I'm a state-certified general appraiser in the state of North Carolina, as well as the Commonwealth of Virginia. I've been accepted before this board as an expert, as well as other boards, well over 100 times in property value impacts for things like solar farms and other proposed uses. As Tom said, the first and best match pair data we have is from Goldsboro, and that's something we've referenced, not just here, but across the state and the country, actually. The short answer is, when looking at homes that sell next to solar farms versus nearby homes that are not next to solar farms, there's no significant difference in value. They don't seem to sell for more or less. The solar farms are not an, a impact on adjoining property values, positive or negative. And it's my professional opinion that this proposed solar farm would not impact the adjoining property values. Furthermore, this is a very typical site where you would see a solar farm. We've, at this point, looked at over 950 solar farms across the country, and the vast majority of which are located on land just like this, with most of the adjoining uses being residential and agricultural, oftentimes converting from an existing ag use to a solar farm use to diversify for the landowners. And therefore, it's my professional opinion that the proposed use would be a harmonious use in its location, and I'm happy to answer any questions about the study. I know that it's 80 pages, but happy to walk you through it.
Madam Chair, I did have one question. What subdivision in Wayne County are you using?
It is the Spring Garden subdivision.
Spring Garden?
Yes, sir. And if you'd like to see an aerial, it's on page 29 in the report.
Okay, great, thanks.
Good morning, board. My name's Tommy Cleveland. I'm a licensed professional engineer in North Carolina, and here to address any potential health or safety concerns from the project. And as Mr. Terrell mentioned, I've got a report specific to this site in your notebook. I've been, spent my entire career in solar, and most of that time at NC State University. I now work for a nonprofit energy consulting firm that expects solar farms for utility. But I've remained an expert on this question since early solar development in state came to me at the university asking these questions. What's proposed here is very typical equipment, a typical site with adequate buffers around the edge. There's nothing about the site in construction or operation or end of life that would have a negative health or safety impact to the public. And in fact, it'd have a very positive impact. It's producing clean energy for decades. That's directly offsetting electricity that would have been generated other ways, primarily probably natural gas is what it would offset, which... probably natural gas is what it would offset, which means it's reducing that pollution that has a positive health benefit. I'll leave it there with some, it just has brief comments, but I'm glad to answer any questions if somebody has a more specific question.
What is the lifetime on a solar farm?
Yeah, the primary component is the panels, and they've got a 30 to, 30 to 40 year life on those panels. They degrade just a tiny bit every year, and eventually some of them will start to fail, but that would be over 30 years. So they could be replaced. From a technical point of view, it's not very long. The primary limit is probably the contractual limitations of the land and selling the power to utilities.
If I could just give you some more information. You can't invest $100 million or more on a, on a short term lease. So the average lease is either 20 years with five year extensions, or it's around 30 years. That way, it's fair to the property owner who needs to know long term what's going on, it's fair to the company that's making an investment.
My name is Michael Graham. I'm a licensed heavy equipment operator. I'm here to tell you about more simple stuff than these guys talk about. I'm here to talk about what goes on in the field, how to get out there and make it happen, who it takes to make it work with. You take your young people out of your community, your people with no skills, they just got good listening instructions, and take young people out there who don't know how to do anything and teach them in a short time, a good skill to carry on. We got builders, electrician, setup people. I myself, I go in from the beginning. I distribute stuff throughout the field, I coordinate with people to work in certain areas and do certain things with the safety. And this job is a, as far as construction and work, it's a pretty safe environment to work in. We really push hard on safety, and if you do what you're told or asked to do, then you're pretty much in a safe work. It doesn't take, it's nondescript. Females can work in it as well as the males. It's not a heavy work because it's a teamwork, a lot of machine work. As far as living around solar farms, the first one I ever did was in 2012, Bisco, North Carolina. I wound up moving there for a little while while I worked with the company away from there. Bought some property up there in Richmond County. Been working on it for years and found out a couple of years ago, these guys are going to want to put a solar farm on it. So the people around me that know me, they said, Mike, hey, what's, what's, go up there and find out what that's about. You know, they sort of pushed me into the, you know, finding out. And as I was telling them, you know, once these things are built, you highly know they're there. They're noiseless, they're odorless, and you profit from them. It helps with the energy, it helps with the clean energy. And to put it all in a short, if you vote this thing in, it's a yes, yes for both the people that's doing it and the people around. As I said, it'll teach you people in the community, it'll put jobs in your community for a while during, during the time this thing is being built. Then if someone's interested, they can use what they've learned to go on and build more because they are going to happen. This is the time for them. And for what I got to say is, this is a very profitable thing for your community, and I hope you consider voting it in. And if you have any questions, I'd be glad to ask, answer them, to the best of my knowledge.
Is there a lot of maintenance on the solar facilities?
No, ma'am. No, ma'am, not once it's erected. It's a very low maintenance, it's a very low maintenance facility. Depending on the, what you chose for your grass, some people put animals there, some people cut it. Wildlife can visit and get on and off. So that's the answer to that one.
How many jobs do you think it's going to create?
Excuse me?
How many jobs do you think it's going to create in Wayne County?
Okay, this being a 80-gauge 1200, I would say anywhere from 100 to 150 jobs during this time. And with the size of this, it should run anywhere from six to eight months, depending on weather. That's a, that's a major player in the thing, weather. We do work in rain, light rain. If lightning comes, it's shut down, nobody in the field, nobody, and that's it.
You answered my question, thank you, sir.
Well, try to. Anyone else?
One more question. Is solar farms susceptible to lightning?
They're susceptible, but it's not dangerous because of the grounding usage, which I mean, just like ground rods to your house or, or facility or pole, they're well-grounded facilities, and it's a very low, a very low danger process. I've never, in 12 years, I haven't heard of a panel being struck yet.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, good morning. I'm Jim Lynch with Goldsboro Mill and Company. I'd just like to highlight, you know, the fact that the Maxwell family and Goldsboro Mill and Company and its affiliates have been good corporate and community citizens. We've got a lot of neighbors. We have been and will continue to be good neighbors, and we appreciate the consideration of this Board of Adjustment for our special use permit. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public that would like to speak on this issue? From the public? On this particular?
On SASSR.
On SASSR solar energy facility.
Good morning, my name's Larry Grady.
Good morning.
And I live at Indian Springs Road. There's a little corner there, if you can see it on the thing, where Indian Springs Road comes in. Well, that is my driveway. It's not my property. Because when I bought my house in 1998, I went to Gordon Maxwell and asked him if I could buy that little strip of land there. And he would not sell it to me because I live on a hill there, and if I had to move my driveway, it's real steep right there. But he wouldn't sell it to me. But he did say we would be good neighbors. But I don't consider being a good neighbor when you stick a solar farm in my front yard, and that's what's going, where I'm going to say it. It will be in my front yard. 100 feet ain't nowhere near close. It goes right into my yard. Now, it's, some of it's not my property, but I'm going to see it. And I have seen there's several solar farms going up and down Indian Springs Road, and I don't see any barrier or any growth. You can see it just plain as day. There's several of them. And also, I have worked solar farms. I've been electrician or a terminal wireman for over 40 years. I've worked with IBEW, Local 553, the International Brotherhood of Electric Workers, and I've worked all over this country. I've worked on the pipeline, I worked at the towers, and I've worked solar farms. My wife got sick, got cancer, and I had to stay close to home. And I worked several of these solar farms. I worked one in Fayetteville, just as far as you could see it was. I saw these all panels. And none of them, I saw any kind of barriers put up where the public couldn't see it. And I know, I'm going to see this, and I'm going to have to look at this every day and see. I'm a big wildlife person. I've, I've had a sportsman's license for 85 since 1985, and I'm in my wildlife in my personal. And I'm not going to see those anymore. They're going to leave. I got deer coming in my yard, I got rabbits and squirrels and all kinds, whereas I have seen eagles there flying over. And that's all going to be gone. When I found that property, my wife and I saw it, we bought it on the spot because that's where I wanted to be. It's wooded, it's private, there's no homes around me, and I have traveled all over this country all my life, and that's where I wanted to be. My wife died there, I want to die there. And even if I wanted to sell that house, I could not, not with that solar farm there. So I don't know what they're saying about far as the baggie dropping, but I won't be able to sell my house. It's by itself there. And that's, you know, I think there's some other things wrong with it. I'm all full of clean energy, don't get me wrong. But I don't want to look at it, I don't want to live with it. I mean, it's just like these jobs I've worked, I don't want to look at what I've done there. And I just, that little strip of land right there, that, it lines up right with Indian Springs, Camp Jubilee Road, and I drive in there every day. I've been taking care of that little piece right there all my, since I've been there. And that's the buffer zone they got there. So I'm going to be looking at this solar farm the rest of my life because I'm going to die there. That's where I'm going to be. But my neighbors, which is the wildlife, are going to be gone. They're not going to come up there anymore. They come in my yard a lot. I have them coming up there all the time. I have all kinds of birds because I feed them and all this, and these will be gone. They're not going to come around it. How, how big is this solar farm? 1200 acres or something? There's not going to be any more wildlife there. Have they been, have they done any studies on this? I haven't seen none. What's going to affect the wildlife there? Has anybody got any paperwork on that to show the public? I haven't seen none. But I know my life is going to change. I mean, I'm retired, and that's where I wanted to be. I just want to be peaceful and all. And this, my life is going to be completely gone. Now, I, I think the Maxwells have done an exceptional job in Wayne County, but I'm looking at this, this is money in their pocket. All that timber they're going to cut off, and I know Maxwell's got more money than anybody five counties around. And that little spot I've got, about one and a third acres is all I've got, it's paid for. I live my life, I'm not the one that wants to make a million dollars or nothing, I just want to live a nice peaceful life. I work hard on my life, and that's where I want to be. So I could say a few other things, but that's, that's my position.
Yes, sir. I really understand how you feel, you know, when you've invested in a property and...
I know I can't stop this, but it seems like I should get a little more buffer zone there, especially my front yard because my house is facing east.
And that's what I was going to ask you, you know, would they, could there be a meeting of the minds where you could be happy?
Sure they could. I'm all for trying to get this thing straightened out. But it's just like I know other residents here, they've lived there all their life. We're, we're, you know, this is where I grew up and all. And these folks here too have, these are family farms that's passed down a generation. Mine's not, but I've got all kinds of families that's lived in that area. My great grandfather was a circuit rider that used to drive, ride a mule from Mount Olive, Seven Springs in that area to preach at different churches. I've got history there, and that's where I want to be.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I wonder if maybe we could hold off a couple of minutes and maybe they could have a meeting of the minds and then maybe come back to us, and we could see if there's been any room to negotiate?
Yeah, that's, that is no problem. We're glad to work. We've had conversations with Mr. Grady at the next meeting. We can immediately, right now, this is without having to look at maps and topo, we can go to 150 feet. I mean, that's, I'm going to throw that out. I, I kind of hear you're saying that 1,000 feet won't make a difference, but...
Well, if it could, but you see that trees there, where that driveway is, there's standing trees, and I know one day they might cut that out, but they're young now. But that driveway, my property line is almost 100 feet, and I'm going to be looking dead at it. It's in my yard.
If...
It would have to go a lot farther than 100 feet, 150 feet.
If, if the question is the driveway, we can't create, control what the easements are that were there when he bought it. We're glad to pause and have some conversations. It would necessarily involve Ms. Lester and Ms. Beddron. We could step outside. But we could see if there's a meeting of the minds. I don't know if possible, we can try.
Yeah, I think this board likes to make sure that everybody that's involved is, is happy with, you know, what occurs when we vote. And I think that that would be wise if you guys could have a meeting of the minds.
Well, I have a question for you.
Yes?
The buffer zone, is this going to be growth that's there now? Are you going to cut it down and then grow something there to vote to?
I'm going to, thank you. I'm going to give you an answer, and then I'm going to turn to the folks behind me for affirmation. But my understanding is that is a natural vegetative buffer that remains, nothing will be cut to be replaced, it will be left. Now, am I correct about that?
That's correct. So the construction limits will be avoiding that buffer area. So they just...
Well, I'm not so concerned about, you know, the north side of my property because it's all woods. I'm the only house there. I'm surrounded by woods there except for... And I know that they're going to go in there and cut all that timber down. And it's going to be wide open. And I have not seen, there's several solar farms down that, down Indian Springs Road and other places I've been, and I don't see no buffer zones nowhere. And I have worked these solar farms. I know what they are, and I've been there.
Mr. Grady?
And they are, they can be dangerous, especially when you have people there that don't know what they're doing.
Maybe, maybe the attorney can go and speak with the representatives from Maxwell and see if they can be a meeting of the minds pertaining to that, and then, you know, we can kind of make a decision.
Yeah, we're glad to, we'd like to hear if there's any other person to speak, and before you decide, we could step out and see what we could do.
Sure. Thank you.
You're welcome.
One other. Who is that?
Your name, please? Belle Chandler?
We have Belle Chandler and then also Mike Chandler.
Okay. We have two more for SASSR.
Well, my name is Belle Chandler, and we live behind the, what the solar panels are going to be. We have a right way on Colley Sound Road that gets us from our house a mile into the woods up to Indian Springs Road. And that being said, am I going to have to drive by or are they going to take my road from me? Because we have no other way to get in and out. We are landlocked. And Colley Sound Farms is right in front of all of our property, and it used to be pig farms. And we have about 100 turkeys that live on that property. We've counted them, and we went back to where they live at, and we have seen them. And that'll all be gone. They'll, all the wild turkeys will be gone. And it'll all be nothing but solar panels, you know? My husband says, it's no big deal, we can drive through it. I want to know what the health issues are with driving through these panels every day, back and forth, four, four and five times a day. I mean, it's very important to me to know that I'm going to be safe and also that I'm going to keep my road because I have no other way to get in and out. My husband says, well, they just built us another road. Where are you going to build it at? I'm five minutes from my mom. Are you going to put it way out on 111 so that, that way we have, I have 10 minutes, 15 minutes? My mom's in hospice. I need to get to her in a hurry.
If you'd like to answer, I'm sorry. The road is protected by easement. There is nothing that legally can be done to deny them access. On the health hazards, we've explained that. We're glad to pause also and have another conversation if we need to. That is for Mr. Cleveland, if you wish for him to come back up and answer that. But the road is a very quick, easy answer. It's protect, it's legally protected.
It's recorded, easy.
Yes, that is correct.
If I might address that, you mentioned the hog farm that we've got there. It's certainly in our interest to protect access to that hog farm too, so we've got no intention legally or otherwise to shutting that road down. We need it for ourselves, so you'd be continued to, you would be permitted to continue to use it as you have been.
Yeah, I just have to track through solar farms.
Okay. Carol, who's next?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Dwight Kearney. I live on Broadhurst Road. I'm here representing myself, my eighty-five-year-old mother, my brother, my sister, and my daughter and her family that I have. Her son, my twelve-year-old grandson here with me, standing in place of his father that was injured in a bad accident last week that was unable to be here today. We all are joining property owners to this project. And we have lived on Broadhurst Road as descendants of the Walker family for over a hundred years. Myself personally for sixty-six years and have enjoyed the, the country life of, of living there on Broadhurst Road. I've done some reading, and I would like to bring to light that solar energy is not as community-friendly as Sasser LLC would like us to believe. I have read research that the solar panels use heavy metals as part of their construction that could become a threat to our groundwater as well as our environment. They propose these vegetation barriers. And if you'll take a drive around our county, you'll see that those vegetation barriers in a lot of cases are little or none. A lot of them are, um, shrubbery that was planted that's not going to mature for years, and half of those are dead. I would suggest that the commissioners table their vote and ride the county and look at, at these solar fields for yourself. At what I saw there becoming for our community. We, as a family, have not been offered any additional barrier space along our property lines. And we all have property adjoining Solar LLC. As a matter of fact, the Sasser, the Sasser name is a name coming from my wife's grandmother, whom they bought that land from seventy-five years ago. Roughly, approximately seventy-five years ago. We're concerned about the fact of, of the impact it's going to have on our property values. We're concerned about the fact of it stripping our community forestry, which is home to our wildlife, including that of the American bald eagle. And we stand opposed to the solar expansion in our community. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
I had a question pertaining to the vegeta, the, the vegetation. Can you answer that? Because, I mean, I know you came, you came through here recently, and there was requirements that were, they were going to have vegetation. So I want to make sure that, you know, those things are met, you know?
Yes. The, the county has a twenty-five-foot vegetative buffer requirement. I believe I'm saying this correctly. But what, this site plan that you have in front of you is submitted as, essentially as a condition of the special use permit. It is showing one of two things, or actually one of three things. It is showing you where the vegetative buffer is retained at twenty-five feet, which is the county's legal presumption that that is sufficient. Or where there is no existing vegetative buffer, it is showing you a buffer, that's the yellow line on your map, that would have to be planted at a rate that is equivalent to a twenty-five foot of, of retained vegetation. Or the third thing that the site plan shows is where the buffer has been offered to people at our community meeting to be greater. So those are the three things. Now, once those are built into the special use permit, they are enforceable by law. And depending upon how your ordinance reads, it either is a daily or whatever the interval is fine that's imposed against the project. Ultimately, your county, if, if Sasser Solar doesn't do what it's supposed to do by law and by that permit, you can pull that special use permit. And I can promise you that you have somebody's attention. This is not something that a, a project owner can blithely ignore. It's a very serious thing.
Madam?
Yes?
Madam Plurton? I think with the discussion that we've had, or in against this facility, that I know according to council, we can vote on this, but I think it would be very disrespectful for us to vote on this issue today with the concerns, I think, that the two, that the developer and some of the residents, you know, like we said, get, get, put your minds together and see what you can come up with. But in my opinion, I don't think we need to vote on this today, even though we can. I think we owe the respect to the ones that's involved. And also, I think that it would, it would paint a picture to the general public. And, you know, we are watched on the county TV channel. I think it would just show the citizens of Wayne County that we just sit here rubber-stamping things. And I, I think that would be a bad image for us. And I just think that, you know, it'd be very disrespectful to the ones that's involved if we didn't get at least to the next meeting before we did anything.
Madam Chair, I did have one question regarding to the twenty-five-foot buffer. Is that going to be a natural buffer? Or are you actually going to be clearing and planting shrubs in that twenty-five foot?
So that will be a preserved buffer. If that preserved buffer does not meet the full twenty-five foot width, then plantings would be supplemented to meet the requirement.
But where you would have already an area that's already forested, you are just going to leave it natural with what's there? Is that correct?
Correct.
I have one more question for you. Concerning the birds at Seymour Johnson.
Yes.
I know it was inconclusive, you know, whether it would be a problem. What if it did become a problem? What would, what is the plan in place for that?
That would be something that is up to Seymour Johnson. The evidence, there's a lot of conversation that's going on in the industry, and there's a lot of early data being collected. I don't know if it's been published at this point, but all that data is pointing to the fact that it is a hypothesis that is turning out not to be an issue. But that would be, you know, there are birds already there. As you heard Mr. Grady say, he has seen an eagle. So it's not like the solar farm creates something that doesn't exist. And, you know, we have air force bases across our country that have dealt with this for generations. It's not going to cause a, a closing of the air force base.
Well, it was just one of their concerns on the letter from the base.
I, I'm just trying to create the perspective or the context within which that was raised.
And Madam Chair, I did have one more question. That is, I need to address the heavy metals or those items that are in the panel itself and what protection there would be for that.
Tommy Cleveland's coming up. The research, and I'm going to use air quotes here, that people find that say they're heavy metals is something they find on Google that says there's heavy metals. And they're quoting somebody who is not an expert, who doesn't, doesn't know how the panels are made.
Thought it was on Google.
But no, there are no heavy metals. Mr. Cleveland, would you clarify this?
I was picturing it.
The panels that this project's planning to use are silicon-based solar cell. There's also another competing technology out there, cadmium telluride based. And a lot of the concerns are about that other kind of panel, the cadmium telluride, where cadmium is a toxic heavy metal. Like it, but that's not the kind of panel this project's using. But there's other kind of panels do have that. The kind of panels this site is using are made from silicon, which is literally refined from quartz sand. So it comes from sand. They pull the oxygen out, and you're left with silicon, and that's where the silicon cell comes from. Most of the panels, most of the material that's there is a glass cover and aluminum frames. But there is some metal in there to conduct electricity around. That's a combination of silver and copper. And then there's tiny bits of solder, and that solder is like a third lead. So there is a tiny about of lead in, in every panel. But it's very well protected from getting out. It's got these strong glass covers. The front and back of the cells are encapsulated with a, a, a plastic that keeps moisture from ever getting inside the, the panels. If a panel does break, they're, they're difficult to break, but it, it does happen from time to time. It'll get discovered in regular maintenance cycles and removed. And the research that looks into this question, it's really hard to get that lead out of the panel. It definitely doesn't happen unless the panels are broken. Even when they're broken, it's really hard to get it out, and there's not much there. So it's this topic that's been looked at a lot, and the conclusion is, there's just no, no public health safety concern, not enough there to, to cause any potential...
Compare that to the home electronics.
Yeah. And this is not, right, this lead is not something specific to solar panels. It's, or sorry, this solder is what I meant to say. This solder is, you know, using the monitors that are all in, in front of you. Just typical, any electrical equipment has the same kind of lead-based solder in it that we're much closer to being exposed to than in these panels. And furthermore, there's a lot of lead actually that naturally occurs just in soil. So if you look at the lead naturally occurring in soil, it varies across the country and across the state. But it's the same amount of lead in the top, like four to six inches of soil out there is how much lead is in all those panels. If you just look at the soil, you know, inside the fence versus the lead in the fence, there's already significant soil, significant lead just naturally occurring in that soil. Just kind of gives you a, a sense or context for the, the lack of safety concern for that little bit of lead that's in the panels.
Yes. You need to come up front, please. We can't hear.
Yes.
You need to come up front, please. We can't hear.
In regards to the comparison of the home-based electronics to the heavy metals that the solar panels might possess, does your home-based electronics not require special disposal?
Yes, sir. You need to come up front, please.
I understand that these are, solar farms are, their lifespan is like twenty years. And when that is, they're supposed to return the land like it was. And all these panels and stuff are supposed to be took up and all that. But they leave all that cable in the ground. And it's miles and miles, and a solar farm this big, I would say thousands of miles of cable, copper and aluminum is left in that ground. What did, what did they do about that? They just leave it, as far as I know.
The decommissioning plan that's in your notebook is very specific to that. And all underground cable is removed. The, the concrete pads that are, where the inverter sit are removed, and it is returned to a natural state.
They, they pull all that cable out?
Yes. That's in, that is in this plan.
Well, that's, that's a big project, I like to say.
I have one question for Barry. Maybe you can tell us. How many solar farms do we currently have in Wayne County?
I don't have an exact number, but I have, I would say probably anywhere from thirty to forty solar farms in this county.
Do you know, like, what the average amount of solar farms are across the country per county? Like, any averages? Because I, I, I mean, I don't want us to get into a thing where we're having two hundred and the average county has twenty.
Right, right. I, I don't have an average. I do know adjacent counties have had quite a number. I know with Johnston County, when I was there, I know we had ten at one meeting with special use at one time. So I know some of our other counties are experiencing a significant number of solar farm requests. I don't know about recently, you know, over the past recent years, of course. But our solar utility facilities have tended to average, usually when they would come in, they were probably around twenty, forty acres in size. So they were rather small. I think five megawatt facilities. Now, this past couple of years, we've seen these rather large facilities, which are, you know, I think last year was seventeen hundred acres. This year, we've had, this time, twelve hundred and so forth. So we're seeing some really large ones that we have not seen in the past. And we have seen that change here recently. Yep.
When, when you get a chance, you think you could get us those numbers? I like to look at them before making a decision also. You know, I know we're taping this, I think, but I think that would be some vital information for all of us to have.
Yeah, I'll see what I can find.
Thank you.
Duke Energy requires these facilities to be large. We can't do a five-megawatt anymore.
I understand, yes.
I'm not wrong, I think Duke has got control of all these solar farms. And what benefits is it's going to help us. Our electric bills are not going to go down. In fact, they're fixing to go up about seventeen percent. That's, that's, that's not right. Seventeen percent increase, and these solar farms that we got are not helping us at all? I, I mean, that's something to think about, as far as I'm concerned.
I made a motion, and we have not voted on it.
There will be a motion on the floor to table this to our next meeting.
We need to close the vote. If anybody is speaking...
Do we have the next public hearing also?
We got to close this one.
Close this one? Okay.
Are you going to have people go outside and talk to come back to you? If you're going to do that, you need to recess the public hearing for that, as opposed to closing it to get that information back to you. Then, if, once you close it, then you could certainly not act on it.
Your motion was to close it. Tape it.
Yeah, my, my, my motion was to...
Table the vote.
But I want, I want to do whatever's right for citizens of Wayne County. I mean, I may need, need some help on the wording, but I just, I just, I think it'd be very disrespectful for all the parties that's involved for us to take a vote on this today as much discussion as there will be.
Is that consensus?
So counsel, can I get clarification? So your recommendation, if, if it is our intent to go ahead and recess it or close it, close the public hearing, and then allow them to go and have their discussions and come back with a report back to us before we actually vote on it?
Yes, but you recess the public hearing while they do it.
Okay.
If you close it, then you have to re-advertise it.
Okay, let's recess it then.
Would you like for us to come back this morning or in a month?
Madam Chair, I prefer a month because I don't think you can go in the hallway and resolve this quick as that. Bring it back into a month. Give you time to get with the citizens.
I, I got, I got one question on the environmental part where they keep talking about the decommissioning. I'm sitting here reading, reading over the site restoration. Is there, whoever can answer this question, come up here. Who's the environmental person? Nobody?
The county has also got a decommission.
Reason I'm asking is, I was looking at it as far as the actual, the concern was part of the, quote, of the heavy metal. Is there any kind of soil remediation or soil sampling or, or environmental studies done on the soil to, to assure people that there's no issues after the fact?
You mean at decommissioning? That is not in the plan. We've not, it's Tommy, but there is... This industry is so new that we have not seen decommissioned solar farms. The first utility scale solar farms, you started to see around 2012. It's going to be a few more years before we do that.
But what I'm asking, what I'm asking upfront is that need to be put in to, to ease people's minds that that's what's going to be done, and then whoever, and who's responsible for putting it back in there if there is a problem, is what I'm getting at.
I, I have never seen a decommission plan where a soil test is done, but that should not be an issue. If you would like to add that.
Well, I'm just asking, I'm just, you know, to relieve people's minds.
I think Mr. Cleveland would tell you that there's nothing in the panels or in the...
So there shouldn't be an issue with putting it in there, then?
There shouldn't be, no, there should not be. There's nothing in there to get in the soil.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Madam Chairman, based on the comments that were made, it would seem to me if you would recess the public hearing until 9:30 on April 4th. That would give them time to meet, meet with people and come back and be able to tell you what, if anything, they've been able to resolve. And that, of course, would keep you from voting on anything at all tonight, which is what I'm saying.
That's, that's my intent, is to let them have the time, ample time to, for all, both parties, I mean, the developer and the citizen base. As I say, I just think, for a project this large, I think it'd be disrespectful by everybody that's involved for us to make a snap decision today, and we're going to have all the information that we really need.
That's the form of the motion.
Well, we got to come out of...
Not yet. You're going to recess this public hearing until April 4th at 9:30, and then you will open the next public hearing, and so specifically for the Sasser Solar Energy Facility. Then you will open the next public hearing for the Stevens Mill Solar Facility.
I changed my, I just, my commotion, and we recessed the public hearing and reconvene at first meeting in April and take matter of view.
No need to vote, you just recess the Sasser Solar Facility public hearing until April 4th. All right, I recess the Sasser Solar Energy Facility till April 4th.
At 9:30.
At 9:30. And now you want to open the Stevens Mill Solar Facility public hearing.
Madam Chair, could we possibly have a five-minute recess?
Can we do that?
Can we do that, there? A vote of adjustment?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
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 Attorney with the law firm of Black Crouch in Keeter in Wilmington, North Carolina. Like to thank staff for their, for their report and echoing what Mr. Terrell said in the matter before us, thanking them for their assistance and willingness to work with us on this project. Always have a good relationship here in Wayne County. I know that we are the second solar farm application for a special use permit before you today, so we're going to try to keep this as streamlined as possible and not retread the same ground that's already been hosed. But at the same time, it is a special use permit, so we are required to make sure that we do have sufficient evidence in the record to support our application. Before you, you do have a copy of the application packet as staff has requested that this be entered into the record. We also have handed up this morning to the clerk copies of affidavits of some of our experts that are here with us today, including Mr. Chris Sandifer, who is a licensed professional electrical engineer in the state of North Carolina, as well as Mr. Nick Kirkland, who you heard from previously, who is a licensed North Carolina appraiser. At this time, we'd ask that those affidavits that will be supplementing their oral testimony here today be entered into the record as well. Again, with us here today is Ben Manuel, who is here on behalf of the applicant and Cypress Creek Renewables, who's the developer of the project. I'm going to be turning it over to him to give you kind of high level overview of our application and of the project itself. But we do have with us experts, the aforementioned experts, Mr. Sandifer and Mr. Kirkland, who are here to testify as to health and safety of the project itself. Any type of technical questions, Mr. Sandifer can address as well. Mr. Kirkland is here to talk about the impact on property values and on the impact to adjacent homeowners, similar to the type of testimony that you heard in the matter before, before ours. That said, there is also included in your application packet, a statement from the applicant that addresses the required findings this board must make in order to support the approval of a special use permit and the reasons that we believe as applicant that we meet each of those criteria. Hopefully and respectfully, at the end of our presentation, we'll request that, you know, this board find it sufficient to approve our application. But before we get to that point, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Manuel from Cypress Creek Renewables, who can give you an overview of our application.
Good morning, Commissioner. Again, my name is Ben Manuel with Cypress Creek Renewables. I've been with Cypress Creek coming up on seven years now and for 10 years in renewable energy development in the Southeast. I'm based out of Ashford, North Carolina. We have an office in Durham, North Carolina. We have our 24/7/365 NERC certified control center. We employ about 130 North Carolinians in our operations team. So that's the team monitoring the plants. There will be a phone number on the gate of every solar farm that goes to that control center. Again, 24/7/365. We have a team of maintenance technicians, vegetative maintenance technicians, who will be supporting the project. We are the third largest operator of solar facilities in the country and the largest owner and operator of solar facilities in North Carolina. We've been here for nearly dozen years, both at Cypress Creek and as a previous company, FLS Energy, who did PV, the photovoltaic solar, which we're talking about today, as well as thermal solar and hot water systems that were before that. So we've had a long history in North Carolina that we're really extremely proud of. The Stevens Mill project, again, very similar to the past applicant, is an 80-megawatt AC facility. It is a larger DC size, so roughly 104 megawatts DC. The solar panels operate in direct current. They then flow through the inverters, which are sitting on concrete pads that then put out onto the grid 80 megawatts of power. The solar panels are sitting aluminum racking, driven into the ground with steel piles. For every roughly 30 acres of solar panels, there'll be roughly one inverter that sits on roughly a 10 to 20-foot concrete pad where the inverter sits. Again, as talked about before, those wires then go to the collector point of interconnection that puts it onto the high voltage lines that crisscross Wayne County. As was previously mentioned, there are a good number of smaller solar projects that are here in the county now that are operational. We own a good number of them. We operate even more of those today. The reason for the larger solar projects is that Duke Energy has been pushing us to drop the price that we can offer for, for energy that, that we provide to them. So as part of that, we go larger to get the economies of scale. We then enter into a typically 20 to 25-year contract with Duke Energy to deliver them solar power at a fixed rate. So whereas natural grass and their fuel prices might be low one year, high the next year, solar has a flat, consistent rate for the, again, 15, 20, 25 years of the, the contract. While solar, again, doesn't work 24/7, it is consistently intermittent. When the sun's going to be shining tomorrow, the solar farm will be operating and putting solar energy onto the grid at that fixed cost, which is a good thing for, for Duke Energy's, Duke Energy's energy diversity. I'm a Duke Energy Progress rate payer, so I'm incentivized to have some solar on the grid, but not all solar on the grid, because I want to make sure the lights are on. This project, again, you can see in your packet, abides by all the setbacks and buffer requirements, the ordinance, as well as decommissioning requirement. I think the one thing I'll echo that the other attorney said earlier is the vegetative screening. I think one thing we've learned, and that is a positive of being not just a developer, but an owner-operator, is that the vegetative buffers have not been great. To this point, I, I sort of encourage counties like y'all on, on the development team to press our, our, our owners of solar projects. I'm happy to, to share their contact information if there are any solar projects in the county, to push them to make sure they are installed correctly. The one thing we've learned on the development side is we now do a landscape plan. We can do it now. We don't normally, prior to construction, that we work with a landscape architect, they look at the local, sort of what, what grows here. They do a walk around the entire solar project to see what's out there and see what can stay or what can goes. It's, it's one thing to say today that, hey, this forest is going to stay there. When we go out there to start construction, it, it might not be sufficient. And so they're going to walk around it before construction. We have this plan in place. We're going to build it. Then we also make sure we have money available to help reinstall that screening. We want to make sure we have the right watering system. Is it, is it going to be drip? Are we going to pay someone to come and water? What is the plan for that? Historically, we, we didn't do a very good job of that. We didn't have a plan. Now we're pushing ourselves on the development side to do that. And I encourage Wayne, Wayne County to, with the owner-operators that are out there, push them to install that, that installed correctly. I, I think the only other thing I want to say, again, out of respect for y'all's time, is we are very open to recessing this and continuing it to make sure y'all and, and any neighbors who come up here and speak, we are, are talking to them. We, we sat next to someone who it turns out has, has eventually an easement on, on their property that, that isn't shown in, in, in y'all's packet. And I think that what shows from our perspective is this is a major step in the project, seeking y'all's approval of getting the special use permit. This is not the end of the project, sort of working with neighbors, working with the county, looking at the project, ensuring the building in the right way. This is sort of early on the process of development. And so we, given if y'all were to prove us today, which again, we're, we're sort of totally open to recessing, once we get approved, we're, we're just not going to stop, stop taking calls. Our long-term goal is to be a sort of cash flow. Hey, we own these projects. We're here for a long time. We own a lot of them already. And so we, we tend to be here when decommissioning happens, and we are proving that by all the solar we own and operate across the country. It's not just a business of developing them, selling them to someone else and moving on. We are, we are here to stay. We're here in North Carolina. We plan to be an independent power producer in North Carolina throughout the country for a long time. Again, out of respect for y'all's time, I won't ask them to talk for long. I'd love to call Chris Sandifer up to talk a little bit about some comments and other things made earlier.
I'm sure I got a question, please. You made a comment while ago about Duke is asking y'all to do something, and I probably didn't understand. Is that where you're, explain that again?
Sure. So the way it started was due to a federal law, Duke Energy had what's called an avoided cost rate. That said, hey, for the next sort of kilowatt of, kilowatt hour of energy, what does that cost to put onto the grid? Put out that cost. And said, okay, if you have a five-megawatt system or below, so again, roughly 30 to 40 acres, we will give you a contract for that avoided cost rate. So again, whatever that rate is for the next couple of years, we'll give you a contract. You can build it. What Duke Energy has said since is, okay, we're still going to have that avoided cost rate, the sort of rate for five, 10, 20 years of, of what, again, the next kilowatt hour of energy costs. But we encourage you, we're going to have a, in our FBA, a procurement process where the goal is to be below that avoided cost. And so we are competing, just, just like the other solar company that was here earlier, to submit to Duke a proposal for energy that is the, the, the best cost that we can do that lets us build a project that is below that avoided cost.
So that's a direct correlation to how much the landowner is going to get?
Sort of, yes, sir. It's, it's, it's a whole-
Sort of. It's, that's, I mean, if you're trying to get the cost down, they're going to get less money per acre.
Yes, sir. I, I, I think the one thing, for example, if you're building on ag land, you don't have to clear all the trees, right? So, so I can maybe pay a person who has agricultural land a little bit more than someone who has timber, because I, I need to go, they, they might clear the trees. I got to stump, grub, grade, do everything out there versus someone who has agricultural land. I don't need to do all that. And so as an example, that landowner who has agricultural land, I might be able to pay a little bit more. On the flip side, if the timber landowner has 2,000 acres and this agricultural person only has 400, maybe they get paid a little bit less because they don't have as much land. So my, my only comment you're pointing is to say it is a, a large number of factors that go into what an individual landowner makes. To your point, it is one part of the equation, along with how much the system costs to build, where, where it is, how much sun the, the land gets, how much it costs to operate and maintain it. That goes into how much we can pay or we can bid to Duke Energy to, to have the rate for, for our energy, if, if, if that makes sense. It is, is one of the many factors that goes into that number.
So did I understand you to say that you target agricultural land because it's cheaper to build on?
We, we, we do when, when, when the land cost makes sense, yes, sir. It, it is easier to build on. Yes, sir. If there are no other questions, I'll, I'll turn it over.
Can you make sure our clerk has your contact information before you leave?
Sure, that'd be great.
Thank you.
Good morning, board. Thanks for hearing us. My name is Chris Sandifer. I have offices at 3118 Green Road in Spring Hope, North Carolina. I've sent a listen to the, the first testimony, and I, I just thought I would mention four benefits that may, you may or may not know. These are not my numbers. I'm not going to put everything in cents per kilowatt hour. You guys pay electric bill, probably pay 10, 12 cents a kilowatt hour on where you are, who's, who's your provider. But you would be familiar with those terms at your home. But the EPA has, has calculated the benefits of renewable energy like solar because of the reduced amount of carbon dioxide, sulfur dioxide, nitric oxide. It's a lot of the pollutants that go in the air when you burn traditional fossil fuels. And they've calculated that, the benefit to the community at two and a half cents a kilowatt hour. The Department of Energy has, they do a levelized cost. Now, I know this is a high capital investment to, to put a solar farm in. But if you do a levelized cost over 30 years, their, their maintenance is down, their energy cost is zero. And so if you do a levelized cost, it turns out that the reason that Duke is pushing this way is solar is 3.2 cents a kilowatt hour. Remember, you're paying 12 cents. But I mean, that's what, that's what the Department of Energy says it costs. Traditional coal, nuclear are over twice that cost. So they're talking about your rates are going to go up. They may go up, probably will. I ain't going to say what Duke or Co-op may or may not do. But it won't be because they're putting solar on. It's because solar is the least cost of, of way of making electricity. Those are not my numbers. That's the Department, United States Department of Energy came up with those numbers. The, the, the third thing I was going to tell them is the millions of dollars of tax revenue that the, the residents of Wayne County are going to receive from this project over the life of the project that will not require any school seats, will not require any roads, it will not require any water, any sewer. This, these, these panels right here are, are approved by the Department of, North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality. It's actually recharging, we use no water. So the water that comes in, it goes, it goes into the ground and, and is, is beneficial to, to the, to the recharging the groundwater. The last thing I want to say, does anybody remember December? I actually was in Texas, so I'm, I wasn't here. But in December, remember the rotating blackouts? Because, because the fossil fuels didn't come online. A benefit was there was 8,000 megawatts. This is a 75-megawatt project, a 75-megawatt project. There were 8,000 megawatts of, of solar that came on, on time, reliably dispatched during that time. I can't imagine what would have happened in North Carolina if those 8,000 megawatts were not there. I mean, they had trouble the way it was. And so with, with, so I'm just saying, those are some benefits. I mean, we, I'm probably, we're going to probably hear a lot of negative things. But I'm just saying those are some decades. Out of that, I've been in this business when I worked for Duke, I was connecting these things. So we were, I'm going to say I've been in this industry for 15 years. We've gone through hurricanes, we've gone through tornadoes, we've gone through floods. We, we've got a great history of, of environmental impacts on solar farm. And to date, there's been no negative impact to help their safety or the environment from, from a solar panel. I'll answer a question. Brian Foster, have I served on the planning board? Bevan, I'm sorry, in Nash County?
Yes, sir.
We've approved 38.
Yeah, I just, I just read that. I just read that.
So I want you to know, if you, if you're at 20, you, you've got a little bit to catch up with us. So, so we're there. And we've got some that are, are several thousand acres, you know, in them. So they're, that's, but all told, we lose less month, we lose less land on the planning board every, every month. We meet, we approve subdivisions. And once we approve a subdivision, cause 64, 264, 97, everything coming out of Raleigh, it won't develop. Once they go into subdivisions, it ain't no coming out. 40 years, 140 years, I don't know. And, and so I'm just saying, we lose about 1% a, a year to subdivisions. And guess what? Total, we've lost less than 1% in our solar farm. And, and they're a great benefit to us. And, and it helps keep our, our tax rates low because, because it, we get revenue. We don't have to spend money for that. I heard some, some questions about the roads and stuff like that and driving through. I hold multiple FCC licenses. And there, I have had to do the calculations for the electromagnetic radiation, electromagnetic interference. These, this facility will not impact anyone. You will not be able to measure the, the background radiation above what the, what the earth's magnetic field, the thing that causes a, a needle to point north is, is going to be about 10 times what you could measure at, at the boundary. So, so there's, there's no, there's no detriment for that. I am a licensed electrical engineer in states from Texas to, to Virginia. And so I, I do, I am professional in license, also a licensed electrical contractor. But I think the last thing I wanted to say was, is about the lead. I heard this, this, the lead is about, and these panels is about seven grams of lead. It's encapsulated, incorporated in the solder that they use to make the electrical connections. Okay, so it's already encapsulated in the solder. It's not just pure lead. It's, it's, it's an amalgam of metals in that lead. That is sandwiched in between two layers of glass. So it's protecting from the environment. But you could take a shotgun shell and go shoot at a duff and spray ounce, ounce and a half of lead, depending on how much you put in the shotgun shell, and that would be equivalent amount of lead that would be in 50 panels. I just want to give you some perspective. I mean, okay, yeah, it's got seven grams of lead incorporated. But this is not free lead. And a shotgun shell, you shoot a, and that, nobody, I mean, you still go to Walmart and buy shotgun shells, I guess. Haven't bought any in a while. But, but I'm, I'm assuming is they have not outlawed lead shotgun shells. So I, just, just for perspective and, and help say, so without hesitation, without equivocation, I would tell you that there'd be no negative impact. It will not materially endanger the health and safety of the residents of Wayne County. And as someone on the planning board to train it, I would say this, this facility would be in harmony with, with that. It's quiet, make no noise, no odor. I mean, it's, 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 you get setbacks. If you can't even see it, you won't even know it's there. So I'm here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
I got two questions. First off, you referenced a rolling blackout, and I don't think we saw it as rolling. It was just blackout. The next thing, explain, explain again what you were talking about, the water.
Right. The water that hits these panels, and you can kind of think of it like a pasture. It's be native grasses, summer grasses under the panels, typically is what is put. So the water flows off those panels and goes into the ground.
I thought you were talking about there was some useful water. Okay.
No, no, no. That's just, I'm just saying, and that water goes in the ground, and it's very, very little of this area is impervious. There, there are going to be some equipment pads, probably 40 to 42 equipment pads on this site. There'd be 10 by 10, they're concrete, and they put equipment on there. So that's a very small percentage of the land is actually going to have any type of impervious nature to it.
Okay, I got you now. I thought you meant there was water involved in this.
No, no, no water. And the terrain out there, the, the water velocity is so low, it's just going to sink straight into the ground and recharge the aqua. Sorry, I confused you with that, Mr. Kirkland. Any other questions?
Madam Chair, who is, who's going to be responsible for the buffers? Is that going to be you all, or is it going to be the landowners? Because I think that's one of the biggest questions that we've had citizens concerned about is the buffers and the lack of buffers.
Well, Mr. Terrell, you've quoted that. You guys have the rights to, this is a condition. In Nash County, if you don't do your buffers, our planning department has inspected. They don't do, do electrical inspections and sewer inspections. They, they go out and, and if, if, if it's not in accordance with the conditions of the permit, they put your permit. So you fix the buffer or, and I'll say, it would be, it would be on Cypress Creek to fix that buffer. It's not going to be on the landowner.
Yeah. So, so, so the permit will be held by Stevens Mill Solar LLC, which will be owned by Cypress Creek. So Cypress Creek will be responsible for that. In our, our lease that we have with the landowners, we, we have that obligation in there, like we have a bunch of other obligations. We have a vegetative maintenance team that, again, is internal to Cypress. We also do subs, some subcontracting out for some of that work, but it is the obligation of, of the project LLC. We, when we go up to, to, to build these projects, we actually get financing. We, we tend to use large banks. It might be someone like Fifth Third, Live Oak Bank. And, and something that they require is that the project have an operations and maintenance agreement, right? The bank wants to make sure this project can stay in, in its permits and, and make sure it's maintained. So they, the banks are actually obligating us to also have those operations and maintenance agreements with the project. So it's not just, you know, we're, we're going to do it. But the people who are part of the project, the partners, also want to make sure that happens. So it, it will be the obligation of Cypress Creek Renewables, the owner of the project.
I mean, overall, I think probably every developer, the solar developer probably has said the same thing. So we just want to make sure that we know who, you know, we need to go to when citizens start calling us, like, you know, this is an eyesore. So that's, you know, my, my reason for, for trying to figure out that. And I think my colleague had another suggestion. He initially stated that when, when you're decomposing, that you have some tests available for the soil. I mean, it's just about reassuring our citizens that they are, that the land is going back to its natural state. So we'd like to see something like that in writing, too.
Yeah. No, we, we can definitely do that. And I think the other thing, too, on, you know, on, on the vegetative language and the ordinance, I think it's pretty good. If there's anything else, if it's, hey, let's make sure the planning department has the right contact. I think that sometimes happens, right? When we start the project, they have my contact. And then when it goes to operations, there's the asset manager. And so we, we could also put the condition that anytime there's a change of point of contact at, at the company it's made. I mean, we, we're, again, we're, we're very happy to do that. And we own a bunch of projects in, in the county. So we're very incentivized to, whatever the best method is to get in, in kind of with the right person to make sure, hey, this notice is made that your, your buffer, there's a bunch of bushes, of shrubs, bushes dying and need to fix this. We want to make sure that goes to the right spot so we can fix it.
And how many projects have you done here so far?
In, in Wayne County or?
Yes.
I, I was trying to look that up. I, I know we have 12 in Wayne and Duplin County. I don't remember, because I, we, we did something the other week. I don't remember how many were in specifically Wayne County. So it's, it's some amount of 12.
Well, can you do us this favor? Can you go and find out what is in Wayne County that you did and make sure that the buffers are where they need to be? If not, repair?
Yeah. Yeah, no, we, we can work on that. I mean, I, I think the other thing, too, is, is on, on the development side, I, I also love working with the counties who can help, not back us up, but it's, hey, the, the counties are requesting it. This is something they're going to send you the notice on. Let's get ahead of it. So we're, we're definitely incentivized there. So I'll definitely work with the planning department to figure that and make sure it's being done.
Thank you so much.
I was going to say one more thing. And, and, I'm also a farmer. I have 100 acres that I leased, that I underpriced. Cypress Creek actually does the maintenance and for those, for that farm, they don't own that one. They do the, the, but there's a sign on, there's three entrances, and there's a sign, everyone says Cypress Creek has got 800 number to call. So if you've got any question, it says if there's any problem on that sign, call this number. So it's not, if, if, and they keep those up to date. So there shouldn't be any problem contacting.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
And you'll have to help me on this, but there, we did learn today there were two types of solar panels. One was better than the other. Tell me, you've got the better side.
We, we do. And, and, and I mean, I think, I mean, the, the one thing, I mean, we, we could go down a rabbit hole here about chemioteride and whether or not it's actually harmful or not. I, I think we're, we're happy to put the condition on that, that we won't use those panels or we'll come back to the board to request approval. So, so we definitely use the, the polysilicon is, is what we use. We definitely use a silicon bat, a silicon-based panel, which is what Andrew was talking about earlier. So we could go down a rabbit hole.
Yeah, that's all the plan that they submitted.
Yes.
Okay.
Panel, you're going to specify on the.
Okay, good enough. Looking at site land, you've got an easement of a underground electric line, I guess, to tie the two together?
Yes, sir. Yeah. So we're not looking at it, but there, there's effectively two array areas, one in the west, one in the east. Sort of, there's actually also a, a conservation easement that the landowner has, which, which will sort of remain out, out of panels, which is just to the south on either of the array areas. And then between the two, there'll be an electrical easement that runs the power from the west side to, 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 to the east side. And that'll likely be a, a 34.5 medium voltage line that'll be varied two, three, four feet beneath the surface so that the, the landowners can continue to, to, to farm or do their other activities on the land.
So y'all already got that easement agreed to?
We have at least one of them. The other one, I think we're in final negotiations on. I, I think we, we will definitely have that on, under control by the time the-
So how many other landowners do you deal with outside the, outside of the property?
It's two.
Two landowners?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. If there are no further questions for Chris, I guess I'm just going to ask Nick to, to come up and, and speak for a few minutes, just to have it on record regarding our project.
Hi, my name is Nick Kirkland with Kirkland Appraisals. I'm a state certified general appraiser. I've been accepted as an expert well over 100 times in property value impacts. In short, we've looked at this site and compared this to other sites. This is a very typical site. It is in a slightly more dense populated, populationally dense area, but it's still considered rural by all accounts and is well supported as a typical site for a, a solar farm. Most of the adjoining uses are agricultural and residential. It's, in my professional opinion, this will be a harmonious use in its location. Furthermore, we've done match pair studies, which show that this would not have an impact on adjoining property values. Furthermore, there are multiple university studies, which share the same conclusion that this would not have an impact on adjoining property values in a rural area such as this. And therefore, it's my professional opinion, this will not have an impact on the adjoining property value. The impact study goes through that. I'm happy to walk through that or walk through an example of what a match pair looks like through that, if you'd like to see. But otherwise, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Use the same Spring Garden example of both projects?
Yes, sir.
Is that the only?
So we actually have 94 matched pairs. We only show about a dozen in the report, and they're broken out, starting on about, I believe in this one, page 28, where we walk through and show what, what that looks like. And if you want, I'm happy to quickly run through this and explain what that is, so you can see what I'm talking about. So that starts on page 28. So we have a, a picture here of the Spring Garden subdivision next to the, the solar farm as proposed, as well as as built. So what we do is we look at, well, what are homes that have sold in that subdivision that actually back up to the solar farm versus what are nearby homes that have sold that are in that subdivision or nearby to that subdivision that do not back up to the solar farm? And how are those prices different? And so you can see several of the examples of homes that were proposed in the Spring Garden subdivision on page 29. On page 30, it's a lot of numbers, but that, that's the math on where we're looking at the, the homes that are next to the subdivision, or next to the solar farm versus those that are not, and comparing those based on area, year built. Oftentimes, in this case, there's very minimal adjustments if they're all within the same subdivision, with the, the difference being those that back up to a solar farm versus those that do not. However, when looking at all of the data, it, it shows no impact to the adjoining property values. And so when we're talking about match pairs, we've got 94 examples, so 94 different homes compared to two to three other homes all across the, the country, actually, of similar projects just like this. And so it's not that we are specifically looking at the Spring Garden subdivision because we're in Wayne County, but rather, we're looking at all of the data that we found across the country and saying, well, overall, what, what are the range of impacts to the adjoining homes? And where, where, what's the average and median of that? So looking at all the match pair data that we've pulled, it shows a range of impact for being an extra solar farm of negative 10% to positive 10%, with the vast majority of the data between, being between 0% and positive 5%. Looking at the average and the median, though, it, it's a positive 1% on both of those. And this is within typical market friction, which is a, a term to basically say that the real estate market is an imperfect market. No two buyers and sellers would pay the exact same amount or sell for the exact same amount, even within a cookie cutter neighborhood. even within a cookie cutter neighborhood. But it's gonna be within typically 5% plus or minus. So most of the data being between 0 and positive 5% is a very strong indication of no impact to the adjoining property value. It's not an indication of a mild positive for being extra solar farm, but rather that solar farms do not show to have an impact on any adjoining property for positive or for negative.
So that's the only one you got in Wayne County, though, that you can reference to?
Yes, sir.
Is that the only one that's close to any property like that?
Close to property? No, sir. We have, I don't know that it's specifically in here, and I don't want to waste time flipping through, but we do have a number of homes that are very close. We've got homes as close as.
I'm talking Wayne County.
In Wayne County, yes, sir.
I'm just looking, I don't see anything, just that same one was in the other one, is what I was asking.
Yes, sir. We have a number of examples from homes up to $1.6 million that back up to solar farms, just as close as is proposed within this project. And they're selling for no less than other nearby homes within their same subdivisions.
Right?
Yes, sir.
So based on sections 54.1 and 54.2 of the Wayne County zoning ordinance, there's certain criteria that the applicant needs to meet in order for an issuance of a special use permit. Based upon the evidence in the record and the evidence, testimony that you've heard today, we believe that we sufficiently satisfy and meet that criteria in the ordinance. As we discussed, or as you discussed, excuse me, during the last application, this application is also, or the location of the proposed project is also included and subject to the Seymour Johnson Air Force Base's conditions that they've requested be included as any approval of this project. On behalf of the applicant, we do not have any objection to those conditions. Like the applicant before us, we agree to work with Seymour Johnson Air Force Base regarding their concerns as it pertains to the bird strikes. Additionally, I believe during our discussion, there was some other potential conditions that may have been proposed, including potentially having the decommissioning plan include some sort of soil testing, which I think that we're also open to having be put as a specific condition to any approval of a special use permit. And also, in addition to already having signage on the project indicating a contact information number for the developer, Cypress Creek Renewables, we would also be open to having, as a condition, that the company would communicate and provide the county with the requisite contact information for buffer maintenance, including in the event that the project changes ownership or anything along those lines. So in sum, we believe we meet this special use permit requirements. We're open to the conditions that have been discussed in the application, as well as during this discussion today. And we would respectfully request that you approve our application.
Thank you.
Before you leave, could you outline those requirements that you must meet in order to meet the special use permit variance?
Sure, I'm happy to do that. In the staff report, I think it's also outlined for you as well, but first one is that the proposed use does not affect adversely the general plans for physical development of the county and will not be contrary to the purposes stated in these regulations. B, that the proposed use will not adversely affect the health and safety of the county residents, will not be detrimental to the use or development of adjacent properties or other neighborhood uses. C, that the proposed use will not be affected adversely by existing uses, will not be placed on a lot of, will be placed on a lot of sufficient size to satisfy the space requirements of said use. D, that the proposed use will not constitute a nuisance or hazard because of the number of persons who will use such a facility, the vehicular movement, or the noise, or fume generation. And E, that the proposed use shall be subject to the minimum dimensional requirements of the district in which it is to be located and shall conform to the off-street parking and loading regulations.
Thank you.
We're happy to answer any other additional questions that the board may have.
Any more questions?
Well, we thank you very much for the opportunity to appear before you this morning.
Sir, we have you to public comments, signups.
From the public, we have Lisa Kuhn, Marshall Jameson, Randy Coon. Lisa Kuhn?
She's not here, she left to leave.
Okay, Randy Coon?
That's me.
Good evening. I'm here about the solar farm on Stevens Mill. I got a letter here that I went and had made up and went to the soil water conservation people. And they were giving me a list on stuff that would be in this soil, that I've not heard them say behind me here, what would be in that soil after these solar farms is put up. And if I can read the, one of them's colium, arsenic, silicone, copper, and lead. You'll never get it out of the soil after these solar farms is put up, and you'll never farm it again, period. And so what the man told me, the farmer, and all these other farmers have told me, you'll never, they can pull them up and get rid of all this stuff, but you cannot farm that farm again because of the toxic stuff that's in it. And I own land back there on the river, behind what they're gonna put. And you know, when it floods, it'll seep slowly back to my field and then go into the Newsh River, right there at me. So I really don't want this, and these other solar farms in the county, they say they put buffers and stuff up, they don't check them. And when they put the trees around them, there are little things about like that, and to make it look pretty, but it ain't. And the solar panels, I got another here, that the recycling places in Goldsboro, one of them will not take none of the stuff, the panels, or their metal or nothing, they won't take none of that. And the other one I checked on, they'll take it, but you gotta cut it in three-foot lengths, but they won't take the panels. But I just don't think it's feasible for having them, because I don't want them run, they're wanting to run that copper line in my fields 48 inches, so it can tie into theirs. I mean, that sounds not deep enough, but you figure a farmer's in there plowing and miss like that. Eventually, it's gonna come up. And then when they get around these ditches and they want to cross them, how deep are they gonna go up into the ditch? They gonna have to go pretty deep to go in that ditch and then come back out, so the man can keep the ditches cut and cleaned out with the backhoe or a tractor. But right now, that's all I got to say. I just, I don't particularly like the solar farms. I appreciate letting me talk to you for a minute. Thank you.
Is your farm the one, sir? Is your farm the one that they're doing underground?
Ma'am?
Is your farm the one they're doing underground?
I think so. It's back there at the very back of the farm, of that field. You know, it's got Randall Coon on it.
It's got it right there. Randall and Lisa?
Now, Matt, they gave me, I had to take a magnifying glass to read it, because that's a small. But I own about three or four fields right there behind where they're wanting to put this. The seepage in the ground, I just don't, you know, they say it ain't gonna happen, but eventually, the man said that you can't ever farm it again, once they put this stuff up. And I'll have the, sir. Who said that? The soil water conservation and the farmers in that area has told me. Then I know one man that had a solar farm put up. He passed away, but before he did, he said, I wish I'd never put them up. And they don't take the panels up. They might say they do, but I've seen these farm, these solar farms at different places in the county, they just take the panels, lay them out there in the very back where the public don't see them. And the grass don't get cut right up underneath, they have to spray it with Roundup or some weed killer. And the other one I saw up there in the southern part of the county, they put livestock in there to keep the grass down. They didn't even stay out there a year. I don't know if they died, you know, eating that grass under the panels or what, but anyhow.
Have you got any documentation from the soil water that you can provide the county with?
Let's see. I got the list here of what he gave me of the chemicals that'll be in there.
Can you leave a copy of that?
I sure can. And then I can leave a copy of what the recycling places said that they won't take it here in Goldsboro. I don't know, they might take it in another county, but right now, they said they won't take none of this stuff, when, once they quit using it. But I'll be glad to, is that, I give her the copy? Okay. I'll be glad to walk.
Is that the only copy you got?
Sir, that chemicals is what will be in the soil.
Is that the only copy you got, though?
Yes, sir. I will let you have and make a copy.
We'll make a copy.
Yes. I'll go walk, go over there, which way, that way?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
I gotta call my deputy unit to get.
Carol, who's next?
Um, Marshall Jameson?
Just take me off.
That is.
Okay. Is that it, Carol? I'm sorry, I'm trying to do two. My apologies.
My name is Gray Autry. Concerned about the panels on the Stevens Mill Road. I have health concerns about it. They, they say that it gives off electromagnetic radiation, may reduce life expectancy, plus other ailments that you could get from that. I have my daughter, her family, and my grandchildren gonna live right there in the smack middle of it. I have a granddaughter, my oldest granddaughter, she has autism and Down syndrome. She has low immune system. What I'm concerned about is it being affected more because of them panels being there. And if she was to catch something directly from them panels, shame on somebody. No threat, just pure fact. Those people, how far is it gonna be to sit back up these shit panels? They say nobody'll take the panels, China'll take the panels. But as far as the rest of the, the land, they say it won't be unusable. Yes, I believe that, because these shit people is only interested in the solar farm being there. The landowners, that the far solar panels going on, gonna give a flip about the people that is gonna be living around it. They talk about their animals. Well, how far does it have to be that it will not come down to humans also? What affect the animals will eventually affect human. Yes, I'm opposed to it. I'm opposed to it today, tomorrow, and forever. And yes, I may sound like I must said, you better be right, I am. And these people that's got land that is gonna put the solar panels on, how close to that place is gonna be to it? I understand it's not gonna be around their houses. Oh, no. Let it go to somebody else. You people have been, give a lot of bull, in my opinion. And that is, I'm only one, but that's my opinion. And this puffing they've been doing about this shit system, that's all it is, puffing. I wouldn't buy a used car from them. And I'm glad y'all sitting up there high, because it's getting mighty deep back here. And there's nothing good about this, except it's sustainable. Sustainable to whom? We lose a few to save many. What the heck? It doesn't matter nobody but a few that it affects. How would you like to be living beside someone that you know could shorten your life expectancy? Your children? Your unborn children? How was affected to women that's pregnant? What's it gonna do that? Do you know anything about that it will do harm to the unborn child? People with deep pockets, that's all they study. These people that's got, they ain't studying about nothing but the money that they'll make on the solar farm that some of them there have profit. That's all. And besides, they ain't even gonna be living around it. If I can live above it, I don't give a flip about who's living down there with it. But it's wrong to put that place there, to put these lives of these people in jeopardy. I am only one, but I am one. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Jeremy Kent Womall, the final names that I have.
All right, I'm Ken Womall, living 1990 Stevens Mill Road. This farm is gonna be all the way around my house. I live right next door to that young lady there. My concern is health problems. Me and my wife both have health problems. And they say there ain't no risk to it, so you can go on the internet, and right here is a book that tells you what you can do and what you can't do. And the concerns, this is what Mr. Gray was saying, the electromagnetic hypotensities associated with living in solar farms. It causes rashes, headaches, fatigues, sleep disturbances. There's a number of things that it can cause. My main problem is all the stuff that Randy was saying, it's gonna leak into the ground. And I have a well, I have county water, too. We drink county water. We take a bath in county water. But I have a well water before the county ever put water out there for us to get it from the county. If that stuff seeps down into the water in the ground level, and then it runs right up under to my stream, that I drink my well water out. and then it runs right up under to my stream that I drink my well water out of, or I fill up my kids' swimming pool with it, my grandchildren gotta bathe in this stuff, and they're out there swimming in the pool with water in the grass. All the critters around there are drinking it. I mean, what kind of problems is that gonna cause us? Me, it probably ain't gonna cause me any problems, because I pretty much lived a full life. But I'm worried about my children and my grandchildren. What kind of effects is that gonna show? These things ain't been around long enough for anybody to do any really good studies on what's gonna happen to the environment, and what's gonna happen to the people that live right in the vicinity of these solar panels. And that's my main concern is for our future, for our children, my children and my children's children. Didn't nobody ask us about living in the middle of another solar farm? I've lived there all my life. I spent five years in California when I was in the military. I came back home, and that's where I live. My granddaddy bought that place, run the hall. And now they're gonna try to put a dag on solar farm all the way around my house. They ain't asked me if I cared about it. They don't care what we think. It's like Mr. Gray said, money's gonna go in their pockets like they need it. We ain't getting nothing out of it except for whatever diseases we get from the contaminations that we're getting out of. And I don't particularly like living in the middle of a solar farm. They got too many acres of land way back off where there ain't nobody around that they can put them solar farms back there, and they ain't got to have them right up there amongst us folks. And that's pretty much where I live at with it. And you're definitely welcome to the copy of this, Mr. Freeman. I'll give it to you. I'm gonna slot that over in most of you.
Is that it? Did, I guess, did your wife want to speak, sir?
No.
Okay. Those are all the names that I have, Madam Sheriff.
Okay. All right. I think we can adjourn the public.
I did, I did have an additional question here. I'm gonna allow you, you decide who goes to answer this. But as you can see, there's a great deal of concern in regards to health issues. And I think it needs to be addressed. So if you would address that, I'd appreciate it.
Sure. I think to back up for a second. I have one question. Do y'all intend to recess the public hearing till, till next time? And then y'all expect to vote on it then? Or is this the end of it? And then y'all consider a motion? I just wanna be clear about what the next steps are, and then we can have it addressed.
I think we have enough information that we can go ahead and adjourn and make some decisions sometime in the future.
Sure, then I'll, I'll cross-suggest the.
Okay. Just from my standpoint.
These panels are made of the three most common elements on the crust of the planet. And I don't know if y'all know what they are. The silicon, oxygen, aluminum. That's what these panels are made of. The three most common elements that can be found on our planet. There are no toxic substances. The most danger, in my opinion, which is, and I've already testified it, there would be no impact, would be they're gonna drive steel piles into the ground so they don't disturb the soil. And they'll probably have a zinc coating on those. Zinc is a naturally occurring, zinc is a good thing, is an antioxidant. But there would be some level of zinc, which is a very common element. That's the 23rd most common element on the planet. And the background zinc, you may not even be able to turn, but if you had to classify, qualify, quantify, to me, that's the biggest hazard, which is basically zero. And so there, there's no heavy metals like I've heard. It's just not. I, I told you I was a farmer. I've been licensed by the North Carolina Department of Agriculture as a pesticide applicator for my land. These forms put out, the application rate is 10% for, because there will be some Roundup phosphates put around fence posts, piles, and stuff like that. But the application rate is 10%, not the concentration of the, or herbicide. But per acre, my rock crops, I put 10 times as much out there for soybean, for Roundup ready soybeans. So I put 10 times as much on the ground for that as I would for an acre of, so I'm not saying we wouldn't use any herbicides around certain areas. And right now, I've also heard about that. There's, there's not a big market, I heard that. There's not a big market right now for recycling solar panels. I think at some point in time, it will be, as they start replacing them or taking them out. But right now, you can carry them for solar. First Solar does recycle them.
That's where at?
They're in Ohio. But they, they will take and recycle, First Solar will recycle those panels. And so if they were as toxic as you can probably find something on internet to indicate, then you couldn't put these in a Class II landfill. These, these, these panels, I'm not saying they ever would anymore than anybody put an automobile in a landfill. I mean, it's just not feasible. But could you put all automobile in a landfill? Yeah, you could. But these panels could be put in a Class II, which is just household waste. I mean, it's non-hazardous material, and it already approved to be put in a landfill if, if the, if the landfill will allow, I mean, if they will accept they got the capacity or whatever. But they won't be that way, because they, they will be, they will be recycled. So I don't, I don't know, I don't know what else to say. I mean, it's, you know, would I have 100 acres of my own for my children and my grandchildren have to put up with? As much as I know about it, would you think that I would put that on then? I mean, I've got 100 acres on the panel. I wouldn't not do that to my children. I wouldn't do that to my grandchildren. I won't see the end of it. I'm like this guy. I'm 70 years old. He might have socks 70 years old. But, you know, guess what? That's a good socks, that's all I can say. But I'm not gonna be here when this thing comes out. But my children are, and my grandchildren are. And I did not leave, I'm not leaving them a legacy of a problem. I did not do that. And I'll testify that. Thank you.
I can say one more thing. I think I totally get that neighbors, you know, wanna make sure y'all consider all the facts and evidence, right, the studies and everything else. I think there were a couple of studies, I think it was the solar and conservation comments. We would love the chance to review those. We've submitted expert testimony. We've submitted studies. Again, we have, we've built 450 solar projects. There have been solar panels up in space for 40, 50 years. This may seem like a new thing, this project next to these folks right here. This is not a new technology. There have been hundreds of solar farms in North Carolina for probably nearly half a dozen, a dozen years now. There have been projects in Europe for a very long time, in places like Germany. Because there is a large market for recycling, they have recycling plants nearer there, there are solar plants, because they are being retired. Here, the plan would be, as time goes on, as plants get ready to be recycled, we, we start to build out that infrastructure as needed, right? If someone built a plant to specifically recycle the solar panels today, that wouldn't be a good business, right? I mean, you're, you're not gonna have any panels to recycle for 20, 30 years. So, you know, we are happy to continue to review those studies, to discuss with people. We have submitted expert testimony. We have submitted studies. And we have sort of presented the facts that, that put all those things, again, that we've said into place. We are totally happy to continue talking to neighbors, ensuring that their concerns, comments are addressed, right? We, I mean, I personally hate the idea that someone's sitting out there saying, "We didn't address their comment." We don't want that to happen, right? We wanna make sure we're talking to them. I wanna make sure everyone's on the same page about the project. So that is very much equivalent of ours, if y'all vote on it today or not, that we will continue to do that.
Can you respond to stacking of replaced solar panels? Because I heard one of the gentlemen say that they've been dropped off, and somebody says, you know, spraying, you know, chemical around them. So.
Yeah, so it, it seems like two, two different things. I think with solar panels, when we're building it, right, we ship them to the site, they're sitting there, then we install them. We, we keep a, maybe a handful of spares on the site. We have a warehouse outside of Raleigh where we keep more, more spares. We're an operations, and we're an operations and maintenance company, so we, we have a lot of spare parts around. We try to reduce keeping them there, partially, again, for self-interest, because they're, if they're sitting there, they're subject to damage from, from anything, right? And so we, we try as little as possible to not keep them there when they arrive, there's certain boxes. So I, you know, there, there may be some at a handful of times located onsite. It's, it's not a very good storage technique to have them sitting there on the ground. So if, if there are those there, I, I don't really know why there would be that many of them. That, that's not a common thing we do. I think on the other piece, again, the, the spraying aspect is just around the fences and the, the posts. We have, again, the, the vegetative maintenance that goes throughout the plant, goes along the side of it. We tend to do about 10-ish mows a year based on weather. That can be more, that can be less. Again, I think I mentioned earlier, we've learned a lot since we started in North Carolina 10, 12 years ago. For whatever reason, they didn't think that they would need to clean the panels. You can only clean the panels with water. And it has to be potable water. So it has to have, have nothing in it, has to have no, nothing like that. So we actually also started coming out to the site, again, with potable water. There's nothing in it. We can't use county water, because there are things to treat the water in there. We use potable water. So that's the one that we've learned, right, is that we need to clean the panels. We learned that we need more mows a year. So when we started, again, eight, 10 years ago, we were maybe only planning six mows a year. We've learned now that we need about 10-ish mows a year. We may find out in four or five years if the rain keeps going, that we need 12 mows a year. And that's just something we're continuing to process. I think the neat part about Cypress Creek is because we've been doing this for, for a while, and been in North Carolina, we've, we've learned some things that if someone showed up yesterday and says, "Hey, I'm coming to North Carolina, this is what I wanna do." We have the experience that we've been doing this. We have solar projects in the community, and we've learned certain things because of that. So I hope I addressed your questions.
I don't think herbicide application's an issue. I mean, you're still different than spraying the livestock fence or something like that. So I don't see that being a problem.
Could I get you all to answer that, or get a copy of that internet report? And, and let's address it if you can. And reach out to the interested party there and address it.
Yes, sir.
I know, you can find anything on the internet, but I'm just saying, I, I think it'd be good to address that.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
It was a pleasure.
Do we need to recess this one, or adjourn this?
If that's gonna be addressed, you need to recess this, so they can see it and come back to you.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we recess and come back to this, I think, the April 4th meeting.
Yes, April 4th. All right. Motion on the floor.
You got a question?
You just said what you, recess it.
Just recess it.
Until April 4th at 9:30 a.m.
I have a question back there.
You have a question?
I've got a question. He said about the panels, they go to Ohio. Who's gonna be responsible for carrying them panels or just go to Ohio?
It is in their decommissioning plan that they have.
So who's responsible? They are, or the landowner?
The company is.
Okay. That's all I wanted. Thank you.
All right. We are in recess. April 4th. Thank you all so much. We have a lot of questions, and I know it's, but I think these questions need to be answered to be reassuring for the people who are living around it.
We appreciate your time. Thank you for being.
Thank you for your patience. And thank you to the audience, the ones that spoke, for your patience as well.
Thank you for your consideration.
And that'll be at 9:30, April 4th.
Read convene. Read convene the board of commissioners.
All right. Kinda let it get quiet. All right, we're gonna reconvene our regular Wayne County Board of Commissioner meeting. Mr. Crump, could you tell me where we're at?
I want number six.
I've heard that before.
And they're in despair. But somehow keeps pushing on the internet. I don't know if those are gonna pull the panels.
Problem.
Once everybody's back in place and everything, we'll be at public comments.
We got another public hearing to go to.
Oh, we still have one more public hearing. My bad.
We have another public hearing, don't we?
We do.
So we're on number six?
Okay, let's move along here. Recovee meeting, right?
Yes, sir.
Item number six, or, yeah, item number six. Receive public comments on a proposed economic development agreement between Wayne County and the Wayne County Development Alliance for the construction of two shell buildings at Park East Industrial Park in Goldsboro, North Carolina. The board of commissioners may choose to act on the matter following the public hearing. And Mr. Neal has some information on that.
Yeah. In the past couple of months, as you all remember, the board has been working on some, and I'll pull up the map to, for us to look at while I go over it. The board has been working on some pad-ready sites out at Park East with WCDA. WCDA owns the property out there. But we have entered into a partnership for some grants through the state, through Commerce, and also some county funds to get those pad-ready sites ready. WCDA is to the point now, they wanna move forward with construction of those. And your manager had a couple of action items at the last meeting regarding funding. Because it is an MOU regarding economic development, we have to have a public hearing, which is what we're doing today. And then afterwards, we'd ask you to vote on that MOU with WCDA so we can move forward. So on the left side, Gateway Drive is down here at the bottom. And then on the left side would be the 30,000, I can't see it right here.
30,000 square foot, yep.
Yeah, on the left side is the 30,000 square foot pad, so I'll address funding on that first. So we had approximately $1.3 million left over from the Hoshikawa cell, which is the shell building across the street. So the Jackson bid, the bid from Jackson Builders on that building was $1.9 million, just under $2 million. So we're gonna use the proceeds from Hoshikawa to pay, put towards that. And then WCDA is putting $600,000 of their funds into that building. That leaves the 50,000 square foot building, which is, came in at approximately $2.6 million. And as the manager suggested last time, the way that we're gonna fund that is the county's gonna use some of the ARP money, the revenue loss money, which can be used for general county operations. There's no strings attached to that. We would use that to fund construction of the 50,000 square foot building. Pursuant to the terms of the MOU, WCDA would still own the property, and they would market the property. However, the final terms of sale relating to those would have to come back and be approved by the board of commissioners. So those could not be sold, disposed of in any form or fashion until they came back to the board of commissioners. Out of the sale of those, the proceeds from the sale, the county would be reimbursed, the 1 point, the 2.6 they're putting in. And then WCDA would be reimbursed as well. Any profits, and when I say profits, that means anything over what we've put in for pad-ready construction as well as construction costs. Any profits would be rolled into project development within Wayne County. And that would be subject to your approval in WCDA's as well.
That's a bit of a specific though, right? I mean, we sell.
Right.
It's just not.
That's specific, correct. Correct. But out of the proceeds, you, you would be reimbursed the cost that you have into the project. That's how it's drafted right now.
Have we gotten clarity pertaining to what we're gonna sell these, these shelves for?
We have not. That, that would be an ongoing discussion between the county manager and your economic developer. But like I said, whatever the price that would be listed for and be approved, would have to be approved by the board on both the 30,000 square foot and the 50,000 square foot. I believe that there are some industries that are interested, that they know that we're under construction. I don't know all the details, but I do know that there is some interest in purchasing the buildings.
To clarify some purposes, the additional that had to be added to that was an agreement that the land value would be at 40,000 per acre. That was discussed by the WCDA board and agreed. So we would want to incorporate. So we would want to incorporate that somewhat in there as well.
Okay.
I mean, there's a cost on the land, and our last sale, that land value was not included.
Okay.
So we have to make sure that the land is.
I would think the value would be more than $40,000.
We had agreed to that, being its value.
Let me pull up.
On this track of land.
Well, I just, I mean, okay. The action we're taking today is not really about the sale of the building. We're trying to get to the construction.
That's correct. I just wanted to make sure.
I was just probably restating a.
So you're saying that that listing price needs to reflect both the construction, pad-ready construction, and the land itself?
That's correct, that's correct.
Fair enough. Any other questions for me?
Madam Chair. I make a motion. Vote, I'm sorry, we are in a public hearing, excuse me.
Need to recess the public hearing?
No, you need to adjourn it unless there's any other.
Do we have anybody to sign up?
We have no one to sign up to speak.
I'm sorry, I was ahead of myself. I knew, I looked in the room, I didn't think it was anybody there.
Okay, we will recess the public hearing.
No, you're going to adjourn the public hearing.
Adjourn, okay.
Okay, Madam Chair, I wish to make a motion that we approve the economic development agreement between Wayne County and Wayne County Development Alliance Incorporated for the construction of two shell buildings at Park East Industrial Park in Goldsboro.
All right, we have a motion on the floor.
One moment. We're going to.
What's green?
Put that up here.
One quick question. How long did it take to sell the last two shells?
Less than three years. The last shell building was less than three years.
From completion, it was a year.
After it was completed.
After it was completed, okay. Or the size, what's the size?
It was 50,000 square feet. It was basically right across the street from these.
And Commissioner Dotteria, I apologize, can you repeat that motion, please?
My gosh. I move that we approve the proposed economic development agreement between Wayne County and Wayne County Development Alliance Incorporated for the construction of two shell buildings at Park East Industrial Park in Goldsboro.
That was initiated, you may start your vote. I can vote for you if you would like, Mr. Akon.
If you want to.
All right, Madam Chair, that is a unanimous vote.
Thank you.
That, and the last thing we'll do right here before we break is public comment section.
Yes, sir.
All right, we have one person for public comments, and that would be a Dennis Lewis.
Good morning.
Good morning. I hope you all.
Do what?
We hear you have four minutes for public comment.
I can't hear you.
I said you have four minutes for your public comment.
Okay. I hope you all seen this flyer, different locations on social media. It's an event that's going to be held. One of the reasons it's being held is to raise funds to send the families of these three law enforcement officers to Washington, D.C. Sergeant Matt Fishman's name is going to be read out that day. His name will be added to the list of law enforcement officers that have been killed in the line of duty. The hope is to send Sergeant Cox and Detective Torres' family with the Fishman's family for that event. I don't think there's any question that the funds will be raised. But I believe this board should be obligated to finance that trip. I just saw where you've approved, I don't know how many millions, for two empty buildings. And I will tell you that the contents of Matt Fishman's grave is more valuable than 10 buildings just like that. And I say that without any doubt. In the past, Board of Commissioners, years ago, allocated $25,000 to send somebody from Economic Development to California to see if they could get Wheel of Fortune taped here. I don't know that that benefited anybody in this county. They approved $25,000 for a one-page ad in Forbes magazine. I don't know that that helped anybody in Wayne County. Our radio system didn't work properly. The county commissioners found $3.5 million to pay another company to see if they could work better. Then, when the original company threatened to take us to court, they found another $300,000 to pay them. A former board, I believe two members of this board, served on that board, voted to terminate the employment of a county manager. I'm not kicking them for that, should have been done five years before they did it. But anyway, we paid him $300,000. We found the money. We paid $83,000 for the school board attorney to talk on the phone. We found the money. We found the money to pay him an additional $250,000 from what other attorney said they would represent the board. We found the money. Let's find the money for the good guys. $47 million for a jail. We can't find four tenths of 1% to save in that construction to honor these men? Don't think of it as charity, it's an obligation we owe these men. And I don't think there's one of you up there who should fear making a comment or making a motion to find $20,000 to send these families to Washington, D.C. I bid you good day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Got a good point. I don't know if, what legally and how we can do it, but I would, I agree with him. He made a great point. I mean, you know, I don't see why we can't. I think we've done money with a lot of other things. We've been places that probably we didn't need to go. If we definitely can send these families, in my opinion. So I would like to make the motion to send the families to D.C. if possible.
Make a comment today.
Great motion. I know it's a great motion, and I hear what you're saying, and I agree with Mr. Lewis. However, I don't think it's the board's, the board should not be using Tyce Pear's money for events such as this. Yes, we should find the money somehow, but it's not, should not come from the board. I wholeheartedly support the idea. I'm willing to personally donate, but again, I've made this comment before, we are not here to use Tyce Pear's money for specific events such as this.
Can I make a comment? I think it's our obligation as a, as an employee of our county that was killed in the line of duty to support him and his family, and the ones that were there that day that tried to rescue him.
And I don't disagree with that, Commissioner Earl. I don't disagree with that at all.
And I agree with everything Bevan said. I'm in total, total support of it.
Any more comments?
Has, have they reached out to the county manager in regards to this?
The group has.
And did they give you the estimates?
No, I can't get them.
You cannot get them?
I can get them from, but they didn't give me an estimate.
So how did, how did they come up with the dollar amount?
I don't know.
That was, that was just Dennis's, didn't he?
I think the dollar amount kind of came out of the air.
If you, if you make a motion to support it, then we'll find out.
I think before we do that, between board, what is your, your position?
I think you have the, a right to, to do this, if that's what the board wants to do.
I would change my motion to a letter of support for the trip, instead of just, you know, because we don't know exactly what it's going to cost, so we can't put a dollar amount on it right now, if we don't know exactly what it's going to cost.
A letter of support, I can go along with that.
On how we proceed with this, is that we do not just pay a certain amount to the nonprofit, that we actually just reimburse the travel expenses like we would for other officers attending a conference?
If that was an employee being recognized in Washington, we would be paying for that person to go to Washington.
Right, and I think that that is more in line with our normal expenditures for employees. So rather than making like a donation to a nonprofit, I think it would be a little bit more in line with our expenditures and our budget to make it part of the travel budget and to pay the expenses directly in that way.
You would recommend that that changes motion to include a reimbursement of travel expenses?
Well, that's what Bevan basically said. That's what Bevan said.
All travel expenses.
For all, for all of the employees and their families, that those three employees and their family.
Now, I do, I mean, I don't need to know a specific amount, amount that you all are willing to, I mean, because I don't know what all of their family means, you know?
Is it going to be for, is it going to be for a weekend, a week, or a few days?
I would, I would think it's just a couple of days, I'd say.
That's, that's, I've never been to one before, but I have fallen firefights, and it's, it's really a one-day event, but they usually, or you do there for a couple of days.
So would you recommend that we put in there a reimbursement for up to two days of travel expenses?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't put a time. Personally, I wouldn't put a time. It may, it may take three days.
May take three days.
But they're, they're not going there for vacation, they do.
Exactly.
If I may, I know our fallen highway patrolman, his family's gone up there. So typically, it is a couple of days because they honor the families at private events, then they have your law enforcement memorial event. And so sometimes it's arrive the day before, have the first day, and then the second day, and then come home.
Yeah, that's, that's about it.
Sometimes like the third day.
And we want also to find the family as being the wife, child, but not extended family. I mean, is that okay?
So that's, that is.
That would be the wife.
A fisherman's wife and his children.
Right.
But it's not his mom and daddy.
Well, that's up to y'all.
How about, and Torres, and Cox?
I think you would reimburse theirs as well.
Right. I think, I'm all for donating, and that's what we've got the county manager, assistant county manager for, let them look into it and, and, whatever, make, make it happen.
Make it happen.
So we got a motion on the floor.
Yep, got a motion on the floor.
Yeah, we're going to, I don't have this in the system, so we're going to have to do it the old-fashioned way.
Old-fashioned way, we can do that.
If there's no more discussion, Commissioner Foster's motion is on the floor, adjusted to, sir, traveling expenses.
Yes.
For spouses and children, as well as for Sergeant Cox and Detective Torres.
And his family, I mean.
And their spouses and children, that is.
May I? So it's going to include dinners and things of that nature too, breakfasts and things of that nature too? Okay, so that's all.
All right, we have a motion. All those in favor say aye.
Raise them high, this is getting boring.
Motion carried.
Lunch is here.
I would like to say one thing here, and I've made this point before. I am not against something like this. I'm for how we spend the Tyce Pear's money.
Yeah, we do.
And that's all it comes down to.
And I agree with you, but I don't, if anybody, and I'll state this, I'll state this, if anybody in Wayne County doesn't think this is warranted, I'm sorry.
I think it's how we go about doing it, and I think our finance director gave us the way to do it.
Madam Chair, can you recess us for lunch?
Madam Chair, if you will recess this meeting until after lunch, and then we'll come back for our work session, please. I recessed lunch.
Thank you.
One proposal versus the next, they're all being treated the same right now. As I said, we're working on a $40 million project estimate, understanding that the guaranteed maximum price is supposed to be available in early April. We distributed a bank RFP, sent it to a big number of banks, 50 or so banks, the same basic universe of banks that we sent the JL RFP to.
You say guaranteed maximum price?
For the project, I believe that is scheduled to be provided to y'all in early April.
I thought this.
And that is correct on their schedule. We are trying to push that up for the end of March so that we can get an earlier start on this. And it may involve that we actually have a call, special meeting, just heads up. That's what we're trying to do.
Yeah, I believe they've, the, the...
But the 20th, they're supposed to have all of those subcontractor bids in.
March 20, subcontractors bid in hand, and at that point, they have what they need to develop the GMP, and maybe that gets moved up.
Right, right.
But we've assumed it really doesn't play into our analysis.
So back, back to the, to the 50% deal one way or the other, if we, if we consolidate, is that going to be, do we, do we get reimbursement still or not?
Yes. Not familiar with the consolidation.
Yes.
That's being discussed.
It's the same, it's the same reimbursement if you consolidate.
Okay.
That doesn't change anything.
What we're trying to do is to get the architect to designate 60% of the building for DSS so that we can get a higher reimbursement from the state, but that's up to the architect.
Understood. Okay. We received five bank proposals. They're listed in the bottom right here of this page, and we're going to assess those, and we're also going to assess the, another option, which is selling bonds in the bond market. You all have done that before. We haven't done it for the last few projects, but you have done it before. So if we go to page three, there's a lot going on here, but I think I can kind of break it down so that, you know, it's manageable. The, the bank providers are on the left margin, JP Morgan, TD Bank, Truist Bank, Webster Bank, and Capital One. Interest rate lock, right? So we're interested in getting a fixed rate for this financing normally. That would be our approach. That would be what the Local Government Commission would want to see, a fixed rate rather than a variable rate. And each of these banks has looked at things a little differently, and some of them get a bit complicated. There's some similarities to what we discussed with the jail financing. I think a little bit of a backdrop on this is we see a lot of volatility in the interest rate environment, and I think a lot of these banks are trying to manage that volatility. So on the right-hand side of this page, any number in red is not fixed currently. It's an indication. It's an estimate. To be fixed at some later date in the process. Anything in black font is fixed today and will be held firm till you close. And when you close, what we're, would, what we would be doing is putting a fixed rate, long-term rate in place. It's just a matter of when can you get to the place where that rate is locked in? And everything in red, again, is not yet fixed. JP Morgan offered two scenarios. You might remember with the jail, under scenario one, rather than fund the loan at closing, they let you draw the money down as you need it, and each one of those draws gets its own interest rate based on the, the market when the draw is done. And then at the end of 24 months, all of the money has to be pulled out, and it converts over to an amortizing loan. So you are drawing down different interest rates for the draws, and then a, a fixed rate kicks in at the end of 24 months. Now, we'll know that fixed rate when we close the loan in May. We don't know it yet, but you will, that fixed rate that kicks in 24 months later will be known. They also offered a scenario too where they said, forget about those draws, we're going to give you all the money at closing, it can be invested, and you go right into a fixed rate amortization, which is more of a typical loan structure that we would see. That's their scenario too. But in either case with JP Morgan, we cannot set those rates until after LGC approval, and it actually would occur on the day of closing, which will create some challenges, but maybe doable, which closing would be early to mid-May, 60 to 75 days from now. Okay? They, under the middle of the page, column C, what we call put and call provisions, we've discussed this at length with staff, and, and there's a concept known that many of these banks have provided called a make-whole call, which says you can prepay the loan anytime you want, but the bank is going to do a calculation that says if, if we would have earned X million dollars of interest over the, the life of the loan, and you want to pay us off early, we're going to give you a prepayment, payment to us that takes into account what we would have earned and what we would do with the money when you pay us off and reinvest it. It's called a make-whole because they are made whole against what would have otherwise been earned if the loan had not been prepaid. So there is an unknown.
So what is that percentage usually?
Well, it's, it's a, it's not, I don't, I don't know that there's a usual percentage. It's a dollar amount that they'll calculate that says, if you had left this loan in place, we would have earned interest at, I'm just going to use this number, at 4%, right? For 15 years. But you're paying it off early, and the market for that today is at 3%. They are going to want to be paid a payment to let you out of the loan because they're giving up 4% money, and they're only able to reinvest it at 3%. So the difference in that scenario is 1% and there's a...
There's still a prepayment penalty.
Oh, it's absolutely a prepayment penalty, but, but you can pay it off, you just will never be able to refund it for savings. There's really no way to get savings out of an early payment.
I, for one, would not be interested in any of those calculations. I mean, that really obligates you.
And it, if, if there's ever a need to try to get out of this loan or pay it off early, it can be, depending on what the interest rate environment is at that time, it can be a very expensive proposition. You just don't know. So we have...
Why would we, well, why would we want to prepay it if it's going to cost us more money?
Well, I, I don't, it may be that you've got to do something to the building, and you need to issue debt to do it, and you need to free up the lien on the building. Or there's an, you know, there's a...
I just hate to obligate the county and commissioners down the road and tie their hands.
And, and we have essentially, in our recommendation, taken the make-whole off the table. That's, I'm getting to that to say we're really not going to focus on that.
You're not really interested in it either. Okay.
Not a fan of it. The other, the other provision in JP Morgan and Truist is something called a put, and what they have suggested there is, look, we, we might be willing to commit to a 15-year term, but not 20. So we'll allow you to, to amortize the loan as if it were a 20-year loan, but there's a balloon payment at the end. And we, the bank, have the right to put it back to you. If we no longer want to participate in this loan, we put it back to you, and you have to pay us back the full amount outstanding. Again, I don't think the Local Government Commission would support that, and another option here that we would suggest we take off the table, the puts.
I wanted to see you explain that to the, to the LGC.
Right. And these, these...
They're not going to go with that.
No, they will not. And, and these types of structures may work in other places and other states, but they would be, I think, have a, a real problem with that type of a structure. It just creates so much unknown. And, and the put is happening perhaps at a time where, you know, things are difficult, and it just puts undue burden on you. So what that means for, from where we are under JP Morgan, we would focus on, what we focused on is that green box, option three, which is, has a 10-year par call, meaning you, at the end of 10 years, you can pay it off with no penalty, 10-year par call. And for, for JP Morgan, that green box is under the 15-year term. There's the scenario one, and the indicative rate was a, a 456 for the construction period draws, and then a 360 for the amortization period. Or if you go to scenario two, you go right into a 382. Again, those would not be able to be locked in until the loan closing in May. We disregarded the JP Morgan 20 years because they're really not 20 years, they're 15 years with a put. Okay? We did not analyze TD Bank, they're not rate, they're not fixed, and their indicative rates were higher than the others. The same holds true at the bottom for Webster and Capital One. So we, we've looked at option three for the 15-year term for JP Morgan, and we've looked at a few options under Truist, two different options for their 15-year term and one option for the 20-year term. All of the Truist's rates are locked. They have to be accepted by April 2nd, and if so, they are locked in for a closing on or before May 18th, which works with our current schedule. They, for the 15-year, we've looked at, at option B and C, that's an eight-year par call, meaning after eight years, you can pay it off without penalty. And we've looked at option D, which is after 10 years, you can pay it off without penalty. That 401 versus a 398, they're very close, almost a, a coin flip. I think if you can get the ability to prepay the loan two years earlier, might be worth paying the 401 over the 398 because you just have an opportunity to refund or pay this loan down without penalty two years earlier. So we've looked at those two options, and then on the 20-year term, we've looked at the 404 rate, which has a 10-year par call. Again, you can prepay it in whole or in part after 10 years. So from this page, we're really just looking at JP Morgan and Truist, and those green boxes indicate the scenarios that we've modeled up.
But you could lock in the 20-year Truist for 4.04 locked-in rate, and that's only 0.03% more on a 15-year?
Correct.
Well, definitely you'd go for the 20-year. At least you got the flexibility.
Yeah.
And there's no prepayment penalty after 10 years.
Correct. Yeah, there's a very little upcharge going from 15 to 20 years, and that's just a function of the way interest rates are currently set up, if you will, or where the market is.
And do you remember what our financing was on the jail?
3.68.
68.
That was Truist 20 years.
Yep.
Okay. And again, TD Bank, Webster, and Capital One, I don't think we need to spend a lot of time. I think it's, it's either JP Morgan, if you like those lower rates, and remember, there's a reason they're lower, is they're not fixed. They, they can only hold a rate for one day. Truist is holding a rate for 75 days. That plays at least in part to why their rates are a little higher. Okay? So we'll, we'll be able to come back to this. If we could go to page four, this gives you a, a lot of detail about JP Morgan's rate setting in particular, and in that middle big paragraph, about halfway down, it says the term loan, that's when the loan is amortizing, will bear interest at a fixed rate set at the time of the interest rate lock, which can occur at closing in conjunction or following the LGC. So again, that's just saying we cannot lock in a rate with them until early to mid-May. And they said they could give us a rate in the morning, and we have to close that day. That is a challenge because what that means is any approvals we're asking you all to give will have, will not have an actual rate. It, it will have to establish like an up-to rate, not to exceed. And then the same with the LGC. I think that could create some logistical problems for us. And again, they're, under acceptance, they, they want to know by April 18th. That would be fine. At the very bottom, under other considerations, this is important, conditions precedent include the minimum long-term rating of the county, which is currently AA3, AA- that that would stay. If the current, if the bond rating of the county were to go down for some reason, they would want to have the ability to increase the interest rate. I think we've had those discussions before with other banks, maybe we see this from time to time. We're not fans of that because a lot can happen that can be out of your control with the rating agencies, and I also think the LGC would have a problem with that provision. But nonetheless, they're willing to, you know, put all of that out in writing, what the upcharge in the interest rate would be if the rating were to go down. Okay? So there's some, some baggage with that proposal. The next page, a couple of, the details on Truist, it's more straightforward. Page five. Yeah, thank you. You know, line four, rate lock, interest rate can be locked through a closing date of May 18th, as long as the term sheet's accepted by April 2nd. We should be able to do that, whether that's, direction is given to us today or at your next meeting. You have either of those that would work. They would allow you to invest in the capital management trust. That's currently yielding 4.5%. So for a lot of these loans right now, if, if you're borrowing at, say, 4%, you're earning more than that during the construction period at the capital management trust, and they will give you the flexibility to do that. Their other terms and conditions are all very straightforward. Again, we're not talking about their put options, we're staying away from those, but their normal par call scenarios are all pretty straightforward. So page six kind of puts numbers to all of this.
Before we go to that, the investment on the part of the county, it would have an interest rate of 3.5?
If, if, if you kept it at the bank, and we would not want to do that based on...
Oh, okay, the current, so the 3.5 is at the bank, but it's 4.5...
At the trust.
At the trust.
So they, they've allowed us, I think on the jail financing, they did not want the funds, I think that was right, to go to the trust. But they've allowed us to put the funds at the trust here if we did this loan because what they could offer you at the bank was 3.5%.
Well, bottom line is that while we're not using the money, we actually would break even or make a little bit.
That's right. We estimated if it's a 24-month construction spend, and you just spent the same amount every month, probably won't work out that way, but it's a proxy, if that rate stayed at the 4.5%, you'd earn about $1.7 million during construction. If you spend the money more quickly, you won't earn as much. If you spend it more slowly and rates stay in there, you'll earn more.
Okay, and I know I'm jumping ahead of myself, but I mean, this, in my estimation, there's no question we would go with Truist.
You are getting ahead. You are getting ahead.
Okay, go ahead.
But that's okay. Anybody else can jump in as well.
Oh, these are little figures.
Page six, columns B through F are all 15-year options.
Can you blow that up on the screen?
Can I do what?
Can you blow that up on the screen?
Is it large?
Sure.
Yeah, that plus sign.
There we go.
Keep going. Scroll, yeah.
It's a little better.
I was trying to earlier, and I couldn't.
There we go.
So, so the 15-year options, JP Morgan, there are two scenarios under B and C. Remember, scenario one is where you, you get the draws, each of those draws is at its own rate. We've got that estimated at a 456, and then the amortizing rate kicks in that's estimated at a 360. Or scenario two, they've given us an indication that they would have a 382 rate. You go right into a fixed rate. Truist 401 versus 398, that's looking at that eight-year call versus 10-year call. And then the public sale, where we would put together the offering documents, we would put together, we would get the ratings, we would have the underwriters, you've done this before, but there's some work to be done. We would need to get that started as soon as possible if we want to go the public sale route. It's currently for a 15-year term estimated at a 322, but we would not be able to lock that rate until mid-May. So kind of like the banks, it's an attractive rate, but we've got 60 to 75 days before we would be able to lock the rate, and we've got some, some, some work to do to get there that we would need to get started. So on a 15-year public sale, that's that column F, 3.22. As you go down, you're going to see we've treated all of these the same. We're basically solving for $40 million based on the estimate. We have the fiscal year debt service. Every option is starting with FY '24. With the 15-year options, it's all done by FY '38. Total debt service, which is principal and interest, is on line 40. The interest reimbursement from the government, Fed, federal government for half of the interest expense on the loan is on line 42. That's a bracketed number. That would be the interest part of the reimbursement, not the depreciation part, just the interest part. So we have a net debt service to the county on line 43 that basically takes the real debt service, total debt service, less the interest expense reimbursement estimate, and it gets to line 43. Okay? And you can kind of look at those, eyeball those across the line on, on line 43 for all the 15-year options, as well as on the far right, the two 20-year options, Truist Bank at a 404, or the public sale, which again is estimated on the far right, upper right, at a 3.57. That could be locked in in mid-May.
What's the reason for that?
But we were looking at the cost of issuance on the public sale being 325 versus 125.
Correct.
So what's the reason for that?
So it's, it's actually the 325 plus the 179. There's, there's, there's additional fixed costs because there are the ratings that have to be paid for, plus a, a more extensive documentation for the attorneys that have to do. So between all the professional fees, the ratings, and then the, the second number, the 179, is the underwriting cost. Now, it's all baked in. It is certainly more than the 125, but it's included in the debt service.
That's a half a million dollars.
So we've accounted for it.
But you're saying it's half a million dollars just to issue if you go public?
Correct. That's right. On a $40 million transaction. I mean, that might be a tad high, but we didn't want to lowball it. It is, but it is, it is a multiple of what you would pay for a bank financing.
Basically, what you're doing is your, the, the interest reimbursement is 3 million or 2.9, whichever way you look, and on that one, it's 2.4, so basically, you're just paying it. You don't get, I mean, the half a million dollars is where you draw it down or get it back on the reimbursement form.
Yeah, and because, remember, it's, it's a lower interest rate, so the reimbursement's going to be lower because you're reimbursing on a lower interest expense loan than you are on the high, so it's...
But what I'm saying is, is if you've had a half a million dollars or 2.4, you're at 2.9 million. You ain't talking but about, am I looking at it right?
Well, I, I would look at line 43. You've, you've got column F, the total after all the cost of issuance and the reimbursement, it's 47.5 versus all the other numbers to the left. So yes, it has more cost of issuance, and it doesn't have quite as much interest reimbursement from the federal government, but it's still a lower-cost option. Because the debt service, sorry.
Go ahead.
The, the added, the added cost of issuance is embedded in the repayment. It's not...
So we're not going to get reimbursed back from the federal government on the issuance cost, only on the interest?
Only on the interest.
And next, the 3.22 or the 3.57, those are not locked in and will not be locked in until May 15th.
Mid-May. Correct.
And we all know that they're projecting interest rate increase here, the Fed is next month, so very likely those interest rates are not comparing apples to apples because the Truist loan is locked in that. We know what that is.
100%. And if I, while we're on that topic, if you could flip forward to page nine?
You should all sing along here.
Yeah, I, I see. But you're still taking a gamble though because that interest rate is not locked in.
Keep going.
I don't know what's going to happen.
There we go. So if you look at this slide, the blue, light blue line is that public sale rate, and you can see that from, in, in 2023 alone, right? That rate has gone down by 50 basis points, right? From a 3 and 1/4 to a 275, and then it went back up by 50 basis points. And that gets to the volatility I talked about. Coming into January, everybody thought maybe the Fed was done, they weren't going to have to keep raising rates, and rates were coming down, and then we continued to see inflation high, job growth strong, and the Fed saying, we're not done, and now the market's gone back up. So my point in showing this is, in a 60 to 75-day window, it is not, it's, it's very possible that we could see the order of magnitude where those public sale rates could move and, and equal where the banks are. So I think that's where you were headed.
Right, right.
The value of being able to lock something in now versus floating with the market for two months.
Yeah, if the rates were going down, I'd say let's not lock it in because everybody is expecting them to go up.
Yeah, I mean, you can see any one of those lines, the market's expectation turned pretty significantly at the end of January, and, and rates started getting pushed higher because of the expected trend from the Fed. So anyways, I wanted to cover that while we were on that topic. We could go back. We were on page six. There you go. So that's the debt service associated with the proposals we thought were most relevant for discussion. If we could go to page seven, I think this is important. It's the same options in the same order, but now each option has two columns, and these tie back to our capital planning work, where we take all your existing debt and your pay-as-you-go and the new debt that's being discussed, your capital reserve, all of those things. And what you see, let's just do SunTrust 20-year, it's columns L and M, right? You see that 20-year term, SunTrust at a 404? Running that through our, our capital model...
Where'd you see SunTrust?
It's Truist.
I'm sorry, Truist. Used to be called SunTrust, Truist, sorry. Under the 404 rate, there's an annual surplus or deficit. That is lifted straight from our capital planning model, and you can see there are some negatives there, and then it turns positive. I can show you the detail behind this, but this is part of the capital plan where we might have some years where we're short year by year, but we have this significant capital reserve fund that we use from time to time to help supplement our debt service budget. And that's what we're showing under that second column. It starts at 17.1, and you can see that we use it and we get down to a, a low of about 5.7 million, and then it starts to build again. Okay? We've done that same thing for each of these options, and so when you look at the Truist 15-year, columns H and I, that's at a 398, right? So shorter payback, the annual surpluses and deficits, the deficits are more, and we rely more on the capital reserve fund balance such that it gets down to about a $10,000 balance. So for the, for almost the identical interest rate, a 398 versus a 404, for the same $40 million borrowing, running it through the same model, the 15-year, because it is... because it is five years shorter and a higher payment, is, is stressing that model more, and it's using almost all of the capital reserve. Whereas if you go 20 years, yes, there's more interest being paid because it's an extra five years. But remember, a good piece of the interest is reimbursed, and it's also preserving five-plus million of your capital reserve. So this is trying to just connect the dots for you about why you might want to consider, and I'm cutting to the chase of our recommendation that we pulled together with staff, which is Truist 20 years. We've got a locked rate. It certainly is commensurate with the useful life of the building. We are getting interest reimbursed by the federal government. So there's a bit of an incentive to borrow for the full project and, and amortize it over a longer term. And it does not use as much, by a fair amount, of the capital reserve that you've got built up that will be important for future projects. So I wanted to, I guess, point those out. And, and there is a detailed slide for each of these if you want to see it. But it, you may, you may have gotten the gist of it from my, my presentation, the, the, just the dynamic of that, how much of that capital reserve would get used between one option to the next. Any questions? I know it's a lot.
I, I, I agree with your recommendation, but what is this chart down at the bottom on seven?
Okay, perfect. So if you could scroll up just a bit. We wanted to make sure everybody was aware of the monies that you have in that capital reserve in that bottom left. And, and these have been part of our capital planning model for a number of years. So at the end of FY '22, you'll see there was a capital reserve balance of about $16 million. And then in 2023, we have an additional 8.7 of ARP funds that were, are or were moved over there. So away from your fund balance, but in the capital plan, there's almost $25 million. And that is what we're showing, you know, in our, in our, in our model. And we're, we're want to understand, how are we spending that? Well, on the right-hand side, you can see there are several projects that we are expecting to fund with cash from that reserve. Shell Buildings, Community College Contribution, Building Acquisition, Maxwell. Under this, these numbers were at 11.9. They could be a little higher when the CIP comes out. So from that capital reserve, we're not only funding a number of projects, but we're also maintaining a balance to help supplement the annual debt budget so that there's no tax impact associated with any of these. And so in talking through with staff, we wanted to make sure you all were clear about the, the purpose, the size, and the uses of that capital reserve. Paying cash for projects that were not debt funding and being available to help supplement annual budgets for debt service. And again, above that, with the 15-year options, we get close to spending those reserves down to zero. With the 20-year options, we're preserving 5 and 1/2 million plus for whatever else might be coming on your CIP that doesn't lend itself to debt.
What is this 5.6 million dollars on Maxwell?
That's not, that's part of the five-year CIP that they have, I think that they requested.
That who, who requested?
James.
Well, James can ask in one hand and spit in the other for all I'm concerned. We're going to spend another 5.6 million dollars over there.
And that's, I mean, that doesn't mean you're approving this project here. It's, it's just, when we give Davenport our expenditures, you know, we present it to them as a five-year plan on the CIP. And so that, that way they're taking into account all potential large expenses.
What could happen.
Right.
This is kind of the way, see, I, that's a lot of work. Here's how I looked at this. I looked at it that we had the 10, 11 million, I'm going to call it 11 million on capital reserve fund. I looked at it that I had 7 million, I'm sorry, 8 million from the 4.4 cent capital reserve. I looked at it that I had another 9 million, which is 8.7, that I had from the ARP funds. So I looked at that I had about $28 million that we could use to pay down. If it comes in at 40 million, we could take 20 of that and only borrow 20. You follow me? That's kind of the way I looked at it. Now, I understand there are some other obligations here. I mean, as far as shell building, community college project, because those things are not figuring into this little brain here. But I wanted to use, I wanted to borrow as much as we could on the jail, but limited on the DSS health building. Now, how does that work in regards to you all's budgeting? I don't know, but.
But your recommendation was that we're getting reimbursed part of that interest rate.
Yeah, the, the, in this case, the debt-
Well, and that did not factor into it.
That's right.
Now, tell me again why we're getting reimbursed on the interest rate from the federal government?
If you take that 5, 6 million out from Maxwell building improvements, you're really looking at 31 million. I don't know when that was established or how long ago.
Before your time.
Yeah.
So scratch it. Why are we getting reimbursed on the problem, federal government?
For DSS?
Yeah.
It, it's one of the eligible costs that they will reimburse for, you know, they're, they're limited on what they'll reimburse on capital projects for DSS. They contributed some to Northwoods, that project. And so they will, they will not help you with your principal payments on DSS facilities, but they will with interest. And so, but they-
I mean, that's great news. I mean, that was something I did not know we-
And that's not unique to you all. I think that's-
But they give us nothing on health, but only on DSS.
Correct.
God bless DSS. Okay.
So let's go to the-
But by, even by borrowing it all, financing it over 20 years, you still have capital reserve fund balances still well in the millions. I think the lowest I see here is 5.7.
Correct.
So it's very, very, very affordable.
Right.
Okay.
So. Go to the next slide. Page eight. We've, these are just some of the key decision factors. I think we've covered these pretty well. On the left-hand side, we kind of identified JP Morgan, just a 15-year term. The rate can't be established until mid-May. The rating requirements that would be included in the documentation. For Truist, they can do 15 or 20. Our rates are locked through May. We can invest the funds at the Capital Management Trust. Public sale, attractive rates, but we're 75 days plus or so before we can lock the rate. And, and certainly those rates could move up to the bank levels in that period of time. And then on the right-hand side, the, the 20-year loan just does not put as, quite as much stress on the long-term capital planning model as the 15-year. That's really the takeaway, and that's really what we were talking about on the prior slide. So our recommendation, if you go to page 10, is to move forward with Truist 20-year proposal at the 10-year par call. Go to page 10. Well, y'all have it, page 10, 20-year proposal at the 10-year par call, which is a rate of 4.04. And we've got a schedule there. Having that direction today would be great if the three of you all are in a position to give us that direction. And then the bidding takes place. Obviously, that's important to know exactly what this project's going to cost and are you prepared to award that. Taking action to move forward with the bank today doesn't bind you. And then we come back on March 21, where you could call for the public hearing. Any further discussion that you might want to have on the funding. April 4, you would hold the public hearing. You would do the second approval, excuse me, the initial resolution for the LGC. You do your final approval in the mid, April 18 meeting. And LGC approval would occur on May 2, and you could close soon thereafter.
I'll go and see if I can get our fourth head nod.
Thank you, Drew.
Any questions?
No. Thank you.
I'm glad you're letting us invest the Capital Management.
Yes, that's, that's a big difference.
Yes.
It is.
Why would they not, why were they not interested in it for jails?
I think they, they'd rather have that money because they don't, you know, they can lend you, lend against it, and they don't have to pay you quite as much interest. It just helps their deposit position. It's pretty interesting to how, these are all very sophisticated banks and lenders, yet they can look at these things very different from one another. And some of them can get pretty creative.
And we already got an appointment with the LGC on April 4?
We've done an pre-application.
We've had our initial call with them. They know that that was our plan. An application has to be submitted by the first week of April. And then it would be on their agenda in May.
He's arguing with the insurance company. He'll be right here.
Then hurry up and wait, y'all.
I did have a question for you, and that is, you reviewed all this. And when we started this project, our process, on the two projects, we had no idea we'd be talking about this type of money.
Right.
We were talking about half or less. But we are where we are. And with us having to take on this type of debt, do you have any concerns on behalf, or should we, as commissioners, have concerns about taking on this type of debt?
No, I, not from where we sit. This, this debt is all very manageable. It's, and yes, these are higher amounts than what were in some of our earlier models. But the rates are lower than some of the planning rates that we had been using. Your debt profile, your, your, your bond ratings, I don't believe any of this would jeopardize that. And you continue to add money to that capital reserve because there have been some positive variances in, in your budget. So that's been able, has allowed you to be able to deal with these higher costs and, and-
And then Chip, you know, that is kind of a change in strategy of rather than paying down half, actually going ahead and borrowing it so that we get full reimbursement on the interest from the federal government. And we take those dollars and put them over there into capital reserve fund. Is that what we're planning on doing? And, and you feel good with that?
Would you like some water?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I think it's smart play because you're picking up $2 million from the government for interest that you'd had to pay.
Keep your cash.
And keep your cash. And that only has to make us look better with the LGC if you've got more cash.
Yeah, and I think what will be important there is just how you budget for the debt service and for the reimbursement.
Can we go ahead with three-head nods?
No. No, you're careful.
I got him. I'm sorry. Well, I can't get him off the phone.
He can't hang up on him. Are you going to give a head nod or anything?
No, no. I'll get some water.
Thank you, Carol. I have forgotten.
Give him another couple of minutes.
I know.
I hate that Wayne had to leave.
Oh, I forgot. So did I, Joe.
Did I say something I shouldn't?
No, sir, but you-
Well, we're about to. Okay. I had forgotten.
We've been here for three days, so I thought maybe you would have forgotten.
Yep. Well, Freeman, what's your thoughts?
I'm for it. I'm just waiting to give the head nod.
You're just waiting to give the head nod.
I think it's a good plan.
It is a very good plan, very detailed.
And we thank you for all your work. This is a lot of work.
Pardon?
We thank you for all your work.
Well, happy to do it.
And the staff.
These seem to get more and more complicated every year.
Yes, they do.
Did, did I hear that you all are the advisors now for the city of Goldsboro?
Correct.
Good. That was a good move on there, Pardon. Wow, interesting. I saw that they had actually moved on to the site over on William Street for the jail. I don't know what they're doing over there, but it looks like they're digging some out.
They mobilized.
The what?
They mobilized the whole site.
They mobilized, okay.
In fact, today, they were supposed to set up their construction offices.
Yeah.
But that occurred.
Beautiful idea, dude.
It is. Yeah, we, we have really, over the last few months, really worked your firm pretty hard on these financing.
Yes.
But the thing is, you must have moved it up pretty well. At LGC, I mean, we didn't even have to go in. They just put it on the consent agenda, didn't they?
Correct. Yeah, and I think we would expect the same here.
Well, that's great. That's great. Suppose we might need to recess and let him finish up.
Do we know what time he left? Because I could not say. I was not aware he left the meeting. Was it before?
I've been on the phone 10 minutes.
Was it before Commissioner Aco?
Yes.
Yes.
Right before or?
Right before.
Well, it is hard when you've got a business and trying to be a commissioner and also handle all the details of a business. I don't have that problem anymore.
I don't have that time, but my time is valuable.
I know. Well, Ted, it's a great job. We appreciate it. Your head must swim with numbers every night when you go to sleep because, I think we have a bigger version than reading.
Stronger glasses.
Or a big screen.
Right.
He's got another insurance company going on. It's a psychopath.
It's a psychopath.
Perhaps we should recess until he comes back in since the-
Perhaps we should recess until he comes back in, since this is a rolling...
Will that be good?
Yes, ma'am.
Let's do that. Recess five minutes.
Do we need to make a motion?
Yes, sir.
And the motion, we need to make a motion that, and I hereby move that we borrow the Truist loan at twenty years at four-point-zero-four percent for an amount not to exceed forty million dollars.
Okay. We'll vote by, raise our hand.
Yeah, I don't know that we've...
Okay.
Do I need to amend my motion?
Okay.
What was the percentage? Four-point-zero-four, no more than...
Forty million for twenty years.
All right, that is the motion. Oh, let me get to your voting spot.
Do we need to vote by hand, or?
No, sir, we're going to vote here. Hold on just a second.
I had to vote by hand because I shut my computer down.
All right. Actually, I'm going to, I can vote for you, and that way it'll show on the screen. Hold on a second here. Prove. We're going to, let's see. I'm going to have to, one moment here. Let me cancel that vote and start over, just a moment.
Okay.
Because we have two people that left the meeting.
Okay.
So, or three people, so...
We'll just vote by hand.
Excuse himself, excuse himself, excuse himself. Close. All right, let me try that again, start the vote. And Ms. Barber, how would you like to vote?
Yes, yes.
And Mr. Freeman, are you still logged in? Oh, there we go. And is it not showing? Here we go. It's not.
Let's do it by hand.
Let's do it by hand, since it's not showing up here. It's like something's timed out. I don't know why. One, two, three, four. There we go.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ted.
Thank you.
Sorry to hold you up.
Thank you.
All right, we need to get back into closed session for one more item. Make a motion, we'll go back in closed session.
A motion to go in closed session.